The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, now I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, December 6, 2022, and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Paulson?
President.
Alder Paulson is here. Alder Fair?
Here.
Alder Fair is here. Alder Tischler?
Here.
Alder Tischler is here. Alder Verveer?
Here.
Alder Verveer is here. Alder Vitterver?
Here.
Alder Vitterver is here. Alder Rahalier?
Yeah.
Alder Rahalier is here. Alder, seat 12 is vacant. Alder Benford?
Present.
Alder Benford is here. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Bennett is here. Alder Carter?
Here.
Alder Carter is here. Alder Conklin?
Here.
Alder Conklin is here. Alder Curry?
Here.
Alder Curry is here. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Evers is here. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Figaroa Cole is here. Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Foster is here. Alder Furman?
President.
Alder Furman is here. Alder Harrington McKinney is excused. Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Heck is here. Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Madison is here. Alder Miyazaki is excused. Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. So, just, we'll have my regular reminder to everyone that we are here to do the business of the city and the people of Madison, ask people to assume good intent and to refrain from using profanity in your remarks, whether you're a council member, a staff member, or a member of the public here, to participate. And then I would like to call on Alder Tischler to introduce some of the guests that we have here in the chambers tonight. Alder Tischler?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to welcome Troop 104, the Boy Scout troop, to the Common Council here. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Alder, and welcome. All right, that will bring us to item one, which is Legis 74878, one of our regularly occurring presentations from our city poet laureate, Angie Trudel Vasquez. Angie, thank you for being with us again tonight, and I will turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Common Council. It's my pleasure to close out the year with this poem called "The Land Speaks." This was written for the Patrick Marsh Wildlife Center. It's an ekphrastic poem, a haibun, which is a prose poem followed by a haiku. "The land speaks. The land speaks to me, calls from outside the car window. We pass valleys, hills, what glaciers made 10,000 years ago when people moved to the edges of newborn waters, where ice chunks broke off, became kettle lakes. The sign says basins where ice lay. Depressions, frozen in time, melt, mark the earth, become altered landscapes, birth novel plants, where fish feed and frogs sing and mushrooms grow, round white saucer hats that tip over in spring from the weight of their halo christening. Blue indigo buntings fly by the stars, chart moonlight migrations. While we humans sleep, our feathered friends leap, follow the call to move. Swans and geese congregate. See sixteen pelicans preen, their necks dip to drink, undulate herding fish in the water. They dance in rhythm, circle the prey, thin species. Their beaks lead fish to a net made out of ripples, bubbles of gas and air, lethal concentric circles calling names unknown. Before telescopes, night watchers, moonshine parades, dinosaur return." Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I don't know if you could hear, but you got a round of applause in the room here. And I'd just like to thank you again for your service as our poet laureate and for bringing us your poetry, but also poetry from around the community throughout the course of the year. Thank you very much. All right, that will take us to our honoring resolutions tonight. We'll start with item two, which is Legis 74752, awarding the 16th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award to Alexis London. And Alder Evers will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to read this honoring resolution. Whereas the Madison Common Council created the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award in memory of Jeffrey Erlanger's great contributions to the city of Madison, and whereas the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award Committee has selected Alexis London, an individual who exemplifies the values that are fundamental to this award and were so admirably demonstrated by Jeff Erlanger during his lifetime as recipient of the 2022 award. And whereas Alexis has worked at the Bayview Foundation since 2015 and as its executive director since 2016, she is leading the redevelopment of Bayview Foundation's affordable housing microneighborhood. And whereas, in preparation for the redevelopment, Alexis guided the use of community, art, place-making, and cultural programming to elevate the voices of residents of all ages, increase their connection to one another, strengthen their role in neighborhood stewardship, and demonstrate the importance of co-creating social change. And whereas, in shaping the actual redevelopment plan, Alexis led Bayview's design justice process, which was informed by years of discourse between staff, residents, architects, and designers, and included meetings in three languages. With those efforts, added charrettes and individual resident interviews, she reached over 70% of Bayview's residents. The final plans came to truly reflect the hopes, dreams, and fears of the people of Bayview. And whereas, while focusing on residents' needs and wishes, she also included sustainability goals. The resulting plan will use an estimated one-quarter of the energy that other developments demand, and residents' utility bills will be dramatically reduced for years. Plans for the new Bayview Community Center are achieving the strictest level of energy efficiency certification. Stormwater management on the site has been designed to conform to current best practices and include green spaces, gardens, native plants, and a green roof. And whereas, through Alexis's work, the Bayview Foundation redevelopment will create beautiful, healthful homes for low-income residents, including an additional 200 homes. It will serve more area neighbors through a bigger and better neighborhood center, include an array of community art commissions and projects built with resident participation, offer more green and garden space, and lay the groundwork for increasing levels of resident stewardship over time. And whereas, work with residents of all races, ages, and demographics exemplifies civility and service. Her work has helped others to thrive, and she has demonstrated leadership in fairness. Those efforts make her a perfect fit for the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Alexis London has been chosen to receive the 16th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award, and be it further resolved that Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway and the Common Council of the City of Madison, Wisconsin congratulate and thank Alexis for all she has done and continues to do for our Madison community.
So, we'll take that as a motion. And there is a second. And I'll just pause now to see if our media team staff have our traditional video this year for us.
Yes, we do.
And so, we'll do the video first, and then we'll present the proclamation and have some comments. So, let's go ahead with the video, please.
Hey, Jeff. I'm glad to see you.
Hi.
Thank you very much for coming by. I asked, this is my friend Jeff Erlinger. He's one of my neighbors here, and I asked him if he would come by today because I wanted you to meet him, and I wanted you to see his electric wheelchair. We'd been talking about electric cars and all kinds of things we've been thinking about this week. Would you show me how you make your chair go?
Okay, sure. All right. Well, first, this is the idled switch, and I do this up to turn it on.
Okay.
And...
You're really good at that.
Thanks.
It's a very fancy machine.
Thanks.
But you're the one who makes it go.
Thanks.
Did it take a long time to learn how?
No, not really. I had other wheelchairs, and that only took, my first electric wheelchair only took me about a day to learn how to use it.
Gee, that's wonderful. Jeff, your mom and dad must be really proud of you.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah. Well, I know I am. Now, can you tell my friends what it is that made you need this wheelchair?
Sure. Well, when I was about seven months old, I had, I had a tumor, and it broke the nerves to tell my hands and legs what to do.
I see.
And they tried to cut the tumor, but they couldn't get it, and I became handicapped. And I got a wheelchair when I was four years old.
That was your first one?
Mm-hmm.
When you were four?
Uh-huh.
Do you remember that?
Yeah, sorry enough.
You must have some mighty good doctors who've been taking care of you.
Uh-huh.
Can you tell me any of your doctors' names?
Yeah, I have a pediatrician, Dr. Hanson, who works in Madison St. Mary's Hospital in Long Island. Then at UW, I have the bone doctor, Dr. Reed, who takes care of the bones, I guess, because he's a bone doctor.
I guess so.
Anyway, I had surgery earlier this summer because I have pain in my stomach called adenomic dysreflexia, and I just...
What was that?
Adenomic dysreflexia. I'm not exactly sure what it means.
But you sure can say it.
Yeah. Anyway, so I had a surgery done just recently to try and cut this sphincter because it's holding my urine in.
Mm-hmm.
So, well, you have a lot of things going on when you're, this just shows you have a lot of things happening to you when you're handicapped, most of the time. And sometimes that happens when you're not handicapped.
Of course. But you're able to talk about those things?
Yeah.
So well, and help other people?
Mm-hmm.
Who might have the same kinds of things.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know that song that I sometimes sing called "It's You I Like"?
Uh-huh.
I'd like to sing that to you and with you.
Okay, sure.
It's you I like. It's not the things you wear. It's not the way you do your hair. But it's you I like. The way you are right now. The way down deep inside you. Not the things that...
I do.
Not your fancy chair. That's just beside you. But it's you I like.
I like you.
Every part of you. Your skin, your eyes, your feelings, whether old or new. I hope that you remember, even when you're feeling blue. That it's you I like. It's you yourself.
It's you. It's you.
I like you. And it is you I like, Jeff.
Thanks.
And there must be times when you do feel blue.
Uh-huh.
What do you do during those times?
Well, it depends.
Sometimes do you make up stories?
Yeah.
Or read?
Yeah.
Or play? I know that's the way I did when I was a little boy. Had all kinds of things that I would do.
Did it help?
It did help, yeah. Does it help you?
Yeah.
We have to all discover our own ways, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
Of doing things when we're feeling blue.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not feeling blue right now, though.
Me neither.
I'm so glad that you came today.
Thanks.
Thank you, and I hope you'll come back to visit again.
Okay.
Will you?
Yeah.
And will you give your mom and dad my best?
Sure.
Because they are sure great people.
Uh-huh. Bye.
Bye-bye, Jeff. I'll watch you as you go.
Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. And next, I'd like to invite the Erlingers up to share a few words if they would like.
It's hard actually to follow. You know, of course, that's not why they named an award after them. But you guys insist on playing it every year, and we're not really in position to object. All right.
And whereas, through Alexis's work, the Bayview Foundation redevelopment will create beautiful, healthful homes for low-income residents, including an additional 200 homes. It will serve more area neighbors through a bigger and better neighborhood center, include an array of community art commissions and projects built with resident participation, offer more green and garden space, and lay the groundwork for increasing levels of resident stewardship over time. And whereas, work with residents of all races, ages, and demographics exemplifies civility and service. Her work has helped others to thrive, and she has demonstrated leadership in fairness. Those efforts make her a perfect fit for the Jeffrey Clay Erlanger Civility and Public Discourse Award. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Alexis London has been chosen to receive the 16th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlanger Civility and Public Discourse Award. And be it further resolved that Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway and the Common Council of the City of Madison, Wisconsin, congratulate and thank Alexis for all she has done and continues to do for our Madison community.
So we'll take that as a motion. And there is a second. And I'll just pause now to see if our media team staff have our traditional video this year for us.
Yes, we do.
And so we'll do the video first, and then we'll present the proclamation and have some comments. So let's go ahead with the video, please.
Hey, Jeff. I'm glad to see you.
Hi.
Thank you very much for coming by. I asked Jeff -- this is my friend Jeff Erlanger. He's one of my neighbors here. And I asked him if he would come by today because I wanted you to meet him, and I wanted you to see his electric wheelchair. We'd been talking about electric cars and all kinds of things we've been thinking about this week. Would you show me how you make your chair go?
Okay, sure. All right. Well, first, this is the idling switch. I do this up to turn it on.
Okay. You're really good at that.
Thanks.
It's a very fancy machine.
Thanks.
But you're the one who makes it go.
Thanks.
Did it take a long time to learn how?
No, not really. I had other wheelchairs, and that only took my first electric wheelchair only took me about a day to learn how to use it.
Gee, that's wonderful. Jeff, your mom and dad must be really proud of you.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah. Well, I know I am. Now, can you tell my friends what it is that made you need this wheelchair?
Sure. Well, when I was about seven months old, I had a tumor, and it broke the nerves to tell my hands and legs what to do.
I see.
And they tried to cut the tumor, but they couldn't get it, and I became handicapped. And I got a wheelchair when I was four years old.
That was your first one?
Mm-hmm.
When you were four?
Uh-huh.
Do you remember that?
Yeah, sorry enough.
You must have some mighty good doctors who've been taking care of you. Can you tell me any of your doctors' names?
Yeah, I have a pediatrician, Dr. Hanson, who works in Madison-St. Mary's Hospital. Then at UW, I have the bone doctor, Dr. Reed, who takes care of the bones, I guess, because he's a bone doctor. Anyway, I had surgery earlier this summer because I have pain in my stomach called adenomic dysreflexia.
What was that?
Adenomic dysreflexia. I'm not exactly sure what it means.
But you sure can say it.
Yeah. Anyway, so I had a surgery done just recently to try and cut this sphincter because it's holding my urine in. So, well, you have a lot of things going on when you're This just shows you have a lot of things happening to you when you're handicapped, most of the time. And sometimes it happens when you're not handicapped.
Of course. But you're able to talk about those things.
Yeah.
So well, and help other people who might have the same kinds of things. Do you know that song that I sometimes sing called "It's You I Like"?
Uh-huh.
I'd like to sing that to you and with you.
Okay, sure.
It's you I like. It's not the things you wear. It's not the way you do your hair. But it's you I like. The way you are right now. The way down deep inside you. Not the things that
I do.
Not your fancy chair. That's just beside you. But it's you I like. Every part of you. Your skin, your eyes, your feelings, whether old or new. I hope that you remember, even when you're feeling blue, that it's you I like. It's you yourself.
It's you. It's you I like.
And it is you I liked, yeah.
Thanks.
And there must be times when you do feel blue.
Uh-huh.
What do you do during those times?
Well, it depends.
Sometimes do you make up stories?
Yeah.
Or read?
Yeah.
Or play? I know that's the way I did when I was a little boy. Had all kinds of things that I would do.
Did it help?
It did help, yeah. Does it help you?
Yeah.
We have to all discover our own ways, don't we?
Mm-huh.
Of doing things when we're feeling blue.
Mm-huh.
I'm not feeling blue right now, though.
Me neither.
I'm so glad that you came today.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I hope you'll come back to visit again.
Okay.
Will you?
Yeah.
And will you give your mom and dad my best?
Sure.
Because they are sure great people.
Uh-huh. Bye.
Bye-bye, Jeff. I'll watch you as you go.
Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. And next, I'd like to invite the Erlangers up to share a few words if they would like.
It's hard act to follow. You know, of course, that's not why they named an award after them. But you guys insist on playing it every year, and we're not really in position to object. I just mentioned, in case people don't know, that was unrehearsed, unscripted, and uncut. It's just eight minutes, two people talking. And that's what makes it so special. Really reflects a lot about both Fred Rogers and Jeff. And actually, Fred Rogers is a great inspiration for this award. And Jeff, he was of important influence on Jeff. And so it's always very meaningful and humbling to be here 16 times now. It's 15 years since he died. And Mary created that right after he died to already give it just a couple months after his death. And each time, we say, geez, you know, this is the year you really need to celebrate civility and public discourse. And we've been saying that for 16 times now. And every year, it seems even more, more important. And certainly, that's true this year. And so it's really an honor and a privilege to We actually just met Lexi for the first time. It's just incredible what she's accomplished with the Bayview Foundation. I mean, we've been reading about it in the paper and driving by and seeing the dramatic changes. And actually, when I was a grad student, what, many years, many decades ago, we actually lived for a summer. We were here for a summer, lived right near there in Brittingham Park. So that has a place in our lives. And so what she's accomplished in itself is incredible. But that's not actually what the award is about. You know, it's not a social justice award or a civic betterment award, even though those are elements. But it's a civility and public discourse award. And so what's special to us about you is the way you accomplished it as that proclamation so clearly and fully laid out. You know, by building relationships between people, by making things happen organically, by being someone that, as we like to say, brings people together and builds community. And therefore, doesn't You didn't just build buildings, but you built a community, and the buildings are what housed that community that you created. And that's what's incredible. That's what's very Madison. And that's what we think the Civility and Public Discourse Award is about. Honoring that element of everything else that you accomplished. So congratulations. It's a real pleasure to get to know you and to honor you.
Thank you. Thank you. And now I'd like to invite Alexis London to the podium to receive the award.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this incredible honor. Thank you all. I know many of you, and I'm so honored to be here tonight with my friends and my family and Bayview's board chair, Mary, and Tag, our alder, and also a board member. And in the company of Howard and Pam, thank you so much. You had a beautiful son. And I am so honored to be kind of in his have this award in his honor. So thank you. And thank you so much for recognizing the work at Bayview Foundation. We have spent the last I've spent the last seven years of my life working on this project and in-depth for the last five years. And it's been an honor to work in collaboration with the residents at Bayview and to really prioritize lifting their voices and their needs and their fears and their hopes as part of this redevelopment. We're trying to do housing differently, and it's all about connectivity. And it's all about honoring the land and the people who use the land and their connection to each other and their relationships. Because it's those relationships that are really going to change and have the most impact on the future and on children's lives and families' lives. And so that's really what it's been all about. And it hasn't just been me. I get to have been part of the power to lead the redevelopment. But we've had an incredible board, an amazing staff, who've been involved in so many of these steps, as well as the residents and the community who have supported us. So this award, I think, really represents all of the energy and the time and the creativity that goes into true community discourse and truly listening to people and honoring what they have to say and balancing that with the needs of the community. That's what we've tried to do. And I think that we've done a really good job of getting close to that achievement. So, and it's a work in progress. But thank you so much, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lexi, and thank you for the good work. It's been moved and seconded. And I believe we may have a few comments from the council. Alder Viver.
Thank you, Mayor. I really look forward to this meeting every year so that we can honor the legacy of Jeff Erlanger and allow a member of our community to be so richly honored in Jeff's legacy. I've had the privilege of working with Jeff for many years. And I always speak on this occasion because I want to share just a few thoughts about Jeff and certainly to congratulate the recipient. For those that don't know, Jeff passed away in 2007 at the young age of 36. And he accomplished so much in such a short life. I came to work closely with him because for a few years, he was president of the State Langdon Neighborhood Association and actually brought that association a bit out of hibernation. And I give him credit for actually being the real creator, founder of that organization. It was so wonderful working with Jeff. But that wasn't all that he was involved in as a neighborhood activist. He was involved in so much other work, including here in City Hall. You know, one of his legacies, as some of you are well aware, is accessible taxi cab service in our community. So we always present this award and remember Jeff on the council meeting closest to his November 30th birthday, and rightly so. I always think to myself, Pam and Howie Erlanger may be thinking, maybe we should wrap this up. It's been a good run, kind of thing. It's been 16 years now. But no, I am so awed, Pam and Howie, at your willingness to let us share your son's life every year, share the beautiful Mr. Rogers neighborhood video. By the way, fun fact, some of you might have heard this in prior years, but Tom Hanks was quoted as saying one of the reasons why he accepted the role of Fred Rogers in the motion picture was because of this very clip that Tom Hanks was aware of. But anyway, Pam has served on the award committee since day one. Pam and Howie, without giving it a second thought a few years ago, said absolutely will help the Madison Parks Foundation raise money to create an accessible playground at Rennabon Park. So for those that don't know, we have the Jeff Erlanger Accessible Playground at Rennabon Park now, thanks largely to the fundraising of the Erlanger family. So again, this is very moving for me every year. It's hard to believe it's been 16 years now. It's also moving for me, I have to admit, because if the plaque was out in the hallway currently on display, and of course, we remove it to add a recipient's name every year, the very first recipient on that is Dick Wagner. And we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of losing him. He passed on December 13th of last year. So that's weighing on me now, too, I must confess. But most importantly, let me say that I can't think of a more wonderful person to receive this year's award. I have admired Lexi's work for many years, admittedly from afar, not too far, because I only live a few blocks from Bayview. But Lexi, you really exemplify what this award is all about. And I know that because, you know, I know many of your board members quite well. I can't thank your board president, Mary Berryman-Aguard, who's here tonight for nominating you for this What Richly Deserved Award. Bayview, and Howie mentioned it in his remarks, you know, has received a lot of publicity of late, and rightfully so. And your dedication to civility and making sure all voices are heard and heard strongly and equally in an equitable fashion is, I'm convinced, why you've been so successful. Bayview has clearly thrived under your leadership. It's not just a jewel of affordable housing, but all of the services and programs you offer and so to every member of the community, young and old, is just something that I think all of us should be in awe of. And I know we're all we speak on behalf of the community and say how grateful and thankful we are for your excellent work. And I know you're going to keep doing it for many years to come. And congratulations on the well-deserved honor tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciated Howie mentioned that Fred Rogers' influence on Jeff and that I remember Fred Rogers' quote where if you don't know what to do, look for the helpers. So that legacy, that Fred Rogers' legacy of what it means to be a true neighbor and a true servant was carried forth in Jeff's life. And then Jeff has left an ongoing legacy for the rest of us to look to. And likewise, Lexi, embodying that servant's heart, which is really what we're talking about, the willingness to put others first and to serve them authentically, has created a legacy of our own, a template now that has been honored even in the redevelopment and the rest of the properties on the triangle. With the CDA redevelopment is committed to doing a much similar resident engagement process that occurred at Bayview. So it catches. It's like, I don't want to use the word it's like a virus, but a good one. It's the love virus, right? And I'm so grateful for Howie and Pam because obviously, you nurtured that in your son. And therefore, that legacy leaves on and is embodied now in Alexis and the work that she's doing and spreads throughout our community. I'm just so grateful to be close to that. I'm moved, tremendously moved, every time we have this event. And I hope it continues for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I met Jeff in front of the MMB walking. He said hi to me as bright and loud as he could. And I said hi back, and the rest is history. Every time we saw each other, we had a beautiful conversation. And he would tell me what he was up to and vice versa. And I remember him I've always had pets. So I was bringing him up to date on my dog. And he said to me, what else do you do, Sharon? And I thought, oh, I see where this conversation is going. So after that, the next time I saw him, I was telling him about some of the committees I was on. He was always interested in what other people were doing and enjoyed it when you were just as interested in what he was doing. He was a joy. He was the sunshine. And I hope that I know it's been 16 years, and I hope it's 16 more because he's one person that I never want to forget. And I never want his generosity, civility to fade. So thank you so much for that strong foundation that you provided him that the rest of us were recipients of. And to Lexi, what can I say? That project was phenomenal. I am so happy that you were able to receive this award. And all the work and all the feedback that I've gotten regarding the process has been positive. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. So without objection, I'd like to just say a few words as well and to thank, as always, Pam and Howie for your service to our community and keeping this legacy going. It was my honor to know Jeff briefly and to serve with him. And he really was an amazing person. And I think Mike and I might be Alder Viver and I might be the last standing on this body that had the opportunity to serve with him. But and that, in part, I think, is why we show the video every year because people maybe didn't have the chance to know him. And again, of course, that was a very small snippet of who he was, but an important one. And Lexi, I just want to say thank you as well for the work that you do in our community. And this was a big piece of work, this redevelopment. But it's the outcome The first building is just amazing. I had the honor to tour it with you and to see, just in ways, big and small, how you're centering humans and community in your work. And that comes out in the very architecture, which I just think is a really good example for our community and really appreciate the work that you're doing. And I know there's much more work to do and you will keep on with it. But I'm glad we can take a moment and honor the work that you've done. Alder Benford would like to speak.
I just want to correct the record. I had the extreme
Oh, that's right. Alder Benford was here, yes.
Of knowing your son. And ironically, right after my service for four years, I served on committees with your son. And so inspirational. And Alexis, you know, I think I've known you since another lifetime ago. And so talking about two people that have always inspired me. So I just want to say that, just to set the record straight.
Thank you, Alder Benford. Sorry for omitting you. You're absolutely right. All right. Now I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous yes vote for this item? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. Congratulations again, and thank you very much. All right, we have one more honoring resolution. That's item three, which is Legisstar 74895, commending and thanking Alder Sayadaboss for his dedicated service to his constituents in District 12 and to the city of Madison. And I believe for this, we will start with Alder Wihilehi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking of civility, community, and leadership, a quality that's so needed in today's environment, it's my honor to read this resolution for a special friend, a colleague, and a brother, Alder Said Abbas. Whereas Alder Said Abbas was elected to the Madison Common Council on April 16, 2019. And whereas Alder Abbas served on the ADHAC Task Force on the Structure of City Government TFAX, Final Report Implementation Work Group, Board of Parks Commissioners, Board of Council Executive Committee, Jeffrey Clay Erlanger Civility and Public Discourse Award Committee, Finance Committee, President Work Group to Review and Revise the Chief of Staff Position Description, Public Market Development Committee, Sustainable Madison Committee, Task Force on Structure of City Government, Urban Design Commission, and One Park Community Recreation Center Advisory Subcommittee. And whereas Alder Abbas became the first South Asian over ever to hold a common council position. And whereas Alder Abbas was the first South Asian to serve as a vice president of the common council from 2020 to 2021 and as president of the common council from 2021 to 2022. And whereas in 2022, Alder Abbas, as a council president, created the President's Work Group on Environmental Justice and President's Work Group on Racial Justice, Anti-Racism, and Equity. And whereas Alder Abbas And whereas Alder Abbas played a leading role in the creation of the Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan and added Madison's first-ever environmental justice language in the planning process document. And Alder Benford will take from here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Alder Abbas strongly advocated for protection of wetlands on the Hartmeyer area and was successfully able to save 15 acres of land. And whereas Alder Abbas was instrumental in decreasing the city of Madison's carbon footprint by introducing an electric vehicle charging station ordinance and plastic straw upon request ordinance. And whereas Alder Abbas ensured community input into the intensive development of the North Side and Near East Side. And whereas Alder Abbas championed many affordable housing projects in District 12 with the lens of sustainability, including the Tiny Home Village. And whereas Alder Abbas, through his hard work and dedication to his aldermatic duties, has faithfully and with honor served his constituents and the city of Madison. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council commend and thank Alder person Sayed Abbas for his dedicated service to his constituents in District 12 and to the city of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Alders. We do have public comment on this item. So without objection, we'll take public comment. We'll then turn to Alders. And Alder, I'll give you the last word. So we'll take that as moved and seconded by Alder Wahilihi and Alder Benford. And then wishing to speak on this item, we have Jennifer Argalander of District 12, to be followed by Beth Sloyes, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Do we have Jennifer?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I am Jeff Argalander, co-chair of the Sherman Neighborhood Association. On behalf of the SNA, we want to give a public thank you to Sayed Abbas for his years of dedicated service on the Common Council, to the North Side community, and to our neighborhood as our District 12 Alder. Sayed has done a great job representing all of us, advocating strongly and passionately on behalf of our concerns in the best interest of the entire community and particularly those in our community who were in need of special help. He was an excellent advocate for the environment and climate change, for progress, for environmental and social justice, and for those whose color, race, national origin, age, or economic status cried out for attention, help, and remedy of wrongs. He was always prepared and thoughtful, helping all of our voices be heard and respected in the public arena. He most definitely helped to make Madison a better place. Sayed has been an awesome Alder, one of the best. We are sorry to see him leave the council, and we will miss him enormously. He was more like a family member to us than a politician. And we do understand and support his dedication and desire to focus on his family at this time. However, we certainly hope to see him continue to be politically active in the future. We are so grateful to have benefited from his strong advocacy on our behalf for as long as he could devote his time to this work. He really put his heart and soul into it. Thanks, Sayed. You are amazing. We thank you for everything, and we wish you the very best.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Beth Sloyes of District 18, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe, to be followed by Kim Richmond. Beth?
Good evening and thank you, Madam Mayor. I recently saw a video of Senator Cory Booker, who was speaking about a good friend who had recently passed away. He described him as a great leader. He mentioned his friend having worn a T-shirt that read, "Real leaders lead with love." When I think about Alder Abbas, I think of him in terms of how he chose to lead. He is a leader that leads with love. As a neighborhood leader, he created lasting bonds with area residents. Sayed worked hard in the Ekin Park neighborhood, on the Neighborhood Association, and was instrumental in helping to create the annual Ekin Park Neighborhood Festival, an ongoing tradition. He participated in the Oscar Mayer Strategic Assessment Committee as Alder and worked night and day on the Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan. It was through his efforts that the adopted plan contained language focused on environmental justice that requires the assessment and prevention of human exposure to toxic chemicals found within Oscar Mayer and the Hartmeyer area. This is important as we redevelop these areas to include safe housing for low-income families and our neighbors. Alder Abbas worked to save green space for a future 15-acre conservation natural area park and the opening of Coolidge Street for a walk-bike-only path to Packers Avenue. He helped expand the bike path near Demetral Park, supported the building of affordable apartments on Aberg Avenue, and he worked for positive changes for bus routes that made sense for North Side bus riders during the metro bus route redesign. He's been advocate for the homeless with the installation of the Tiny House Village on Aberg and the temporary use of the public market facility for helping our homeless neighbors. Through his efforts, additional funds were recently allocated towards the public market project. I look forward to all that it will bring to an energized and diverse group of entrepreneurs. Mostly, though, I'm grateful for his service. I thank his family for their kindness, patience, and persistence. Being an Alder is tiny because they're named and hard at work. I thank you, Sayed, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. We are all the better for your having served. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bonnie Rowe of District 11, to be followed by Kim Richmond, to be followed by Ankeeta Bahadwaj. Bonnie?
Good evening, everyone. Alder Abbas, thank you for your leadership. These honorary words from me are from a conflicted place because it is really difficult to see you go. I've enjoyed getting to know you through your roles on the Common Council as Alder, Council Vice President, President, and then Alder again. I don't live in your district, of course, but you have done great things for our whole city, and I'm so grateful for you. You even took the time to meet with me on various concerns, and I really felt heard. You have listened, built bridges, and worked collaboratively to get things done, to make the Madison you love a better place for all residents. You listened to understand. Unlike some, you didn't have an agenda. You were pushing no matter what. But you represented your constituents' needs and desires, sometimes even when it went against your own personal feelings or desires. You've been a voice for the people. You kept the public market in front of the council when it looked like it might be going nowhere, for one very recent example. You have so many accomplishments and so much legislation to be proud of, as Alder Wahilihi and Alder Benford and these residents have just reminded us. And so many relationships and connections. You are a person who brings people together and creates community, better than most people I know. You are one that residents could proudly stand behind, one who presented yourself well, who conducted yourself with dignity, respect, and confidence. You have sound logic and reasoning and could be counted on to explain why you were voting the way you did on many controversial issues. You are influential because people want to follow you, and you have used your influence well. You are a leader among leaders, a person of faith, values, and integrity. And that's why you're stepping down to focus on those beautiful young daughters growing up before your eyes and to take the time to invest in being a devoted husband and father when it really counts the most in these young years. I admire you for that. And I know there is much more in store for you as a leader, role model, and pillar of our community in the future. Your influence will not be over as you leave this role for now. And I can't wait to see what is down the road for you. All the best to you and yours as you focus on this chapter that's before you now. Thank you, Alder Abbas, for your service, your leadership, and your huge contribution to our city. You will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kim Richmond of District 16, to be followed by Ankeeta Bahadwaj. Kim?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Alders. How about Troop 104? And congratulations to Alexis London. And thank you to the Erlangers. That's quite heartwarming. I'd like to express a huge thank you to Mr. Abbas for serving the people of the 12th District as an Alder, as well as serving Madison as the Vice President and the President of the Common Council. Although I don't reside in the 12th District, I am an East Sider, and I know many people who do live in the 12th, and they have nothing but praise for you. Although never having the honor or pleasure to meet you in person, watching from afar the past three and a half years, it's very obvious that you've been a voice of reason, a voice of caring and common sense. You care about the entire Madison community. You listen to and talk with your constituents. You took your roles seriously. You did what you believed is right. You sacrificed a lot to serve your constituents. It's a lot of time for someone with a young family like yours, and I'm sure you didn't do it for any recognition. You attended common council meetings, committee meetings, public meetings, public events, all at the same time, still being a father for your young, growing family. I've always seen you treat others with respect, and I never heard you talk down or roll your eyes at an Alder or speaker who you may not have agreed with at common council meetings. You are living proof. You are living proof, as an immigrant in the United States, that with hard work and dedication, you can do and be whatever you want. I truly believe that you are a model of which all Common Council members should be. I was going to say, "Don't be a stranger," but I'm sure you won't be. So congratulations and enjoy your time.
Thank you. Our final registrant on this item is Ankeeta Bahadwaj of District 4. Ankeeta?
Sayed is a force of nature. It is as simple as that. There is no way around it. He has broken so many records, and the city of Madison is blessed for having his leadership, especially through the pandemic, one of the most difficult times of our lives. He did not only perform well, he performed in an inclusive, brave, and honest manner. I have personally seen him do his extensive research before each vote and dedicate his time to the service of his constituents. A lot of folks don't know, but Sayed and I are from two different countries who've been embroiled in war for nearly 7.5 decades and counting as a direct result of white supremacy. As a Muslim, and I, he's a Muslim and I'm a Hindu, two religions that are constantly at war with each other in South Asia. Despite that, the respect we have for each other is a living testament to the fact that Sayed sees people as fellow humans first and foremost. It proves beyond any shadow of doubt that he's a leader who doesn't give in to political agenda and intimidation and fights white supremacist ideas and policies with bravery like none other. Many times during his tenure on the respected council, I saw political pressure and hardships imposed on him in an order to influence his votes and his commitment to the folks who elected him and put him in the office. It obviously did not work. His commitment to his constituents is inspirational to so many young South Asian people in the United States and back home in South Asia. He was the first Muslim and South Asian president and the Vice President of the council to a feat extraordinary, given the social and political hurdles we have placed for folks with his identity. I'm proud to say that he's not only been my mentor and my brother, but also an inspiration, a roadmap, and a blueprint of who you should be when you serve others and how to center people first and personal agenda? Never. We have been lucky to be served by you, Sayed. And although I did not ever live in your district, I'm so glad I know you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That is all the public comment I have on this item. So it has been moved and seconded. Are there Alders that wish to speak? Alder Carter?
Thank you. I'd like to start out with a sentence that Alder Abbas always said when the mayor called on him on a certain item. And that is, "I'm not going to take up too much time." And then he would go on and explain his position. Well, let me explain my position tonight. I met Alder Abbas in 2019 when he was campaigning. We've had several conversations. And when he won, I was surprised how much of an advocate he was for the environment, sustainability, reducing carbon footprint. But I was also amazed at his neighborhood connection. Alder Abbas builds bridges. Some of us walk across the bridge and set it on fire when we get to the other side so we can't go back. Then we try to find another bridge so we can go back. Alder Abbas builds bridges. And over these last three years, three and a half years, I have seen those bridges still standing. I have seen residents still praising. I have seen colleagues still wanting to not only work with Alder Abbas, but know more about what he knows. And that is what we are here for. Sometimes our legacy starts with our constituents. And other times, our legacy is what we get passed in the council. But our true legacy is what we do for this city. We are here to represent our district, but we're also here to represent every person in this city. And I have seen Alder Abbas not only cherish that, but also walk the walk, talk the talk. As my aunt would say, "He's an earth angel." There's not too many of them, because she never said that about me. But that's okay if she's listening. But I will say this. I appreciate the fact that his family has allowed him to enter our lives. I appreciate the fact that we've seen his daughters on Zoom on several occasions. And I appreciate the fact that Alder Abbas has come into our lives. I can stand here and say that he is my friend and I am yours. I can stand here and say, he said one day to me that I was a great world model, and I say the same thing back to him. And this is one of those moments that I remember when Alder Abbas said to Alder David Aaron, "I don't want you to leave." And David Aaron said, "But I want to leave." And so we know this is it for the council. But I really hope that you consider other political offices because you are what we want to be and need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'll just note that traditionally, we have limited to two Alders speaking. And Alder Abbas requested Alder Carter and Alder Vavir to speak. So Alder Meadze, without objection, I'm going to ask you to withdraw and turn to Alder Vavir.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to admit, I think Alder Meadze would do a better job perhaps than I would. But I have to say, I was honored, Sayed, when you asked me to say a few words on your behalf as you leave this body tonight publicly. As the only other member of a small club of current council members that served as council president, Alder Carter and I can absolutely understand the shoes you walked in as our president. I'm sure that President Furman would agree that leadership, especially as council president, is a thankless assignment at times. I would say perhaps the majority of time. And it has been such an honor to be your friend and colleague, Sayed, especially the many, many conversations we had during your couple of years in council leadership. especially the many, many conversations we had during your couple of years in council leadership. I want to share with everybody that the first time I met Sayed was actually not during the campaign. We were still in the ravages of, I don't know. I guess Sayed had a real campaign, something that I didn't have. And so I actually don't recall meeting Sayed during the campaign. What I do remember is after your election, Sayed, you wanted to meet, which I certainly relish the opportunity to do so. I had assumed it would be for an hour, maybe two hours. We met at a restaurant appropriately on the north side, and we literally shut the place down. They had to kick us out of the restaurant after about three, four. It was definitely over three hours, probably four hours, as I recall, while your family was probably wondering, "Where in the world is our husband and father?" But the reason I want to share that is because that, to me, is emblematic of your service in this body, Sayed. The fact that you peppered me with one question after another that first night that we had a long talk and asked my advice on this, that, and the other initiative you wanted to get done for not only the people in interest of your district, but the people in interest of our entire city. I don't know that my advice was that helpful at all, but clearly you excelled in those endeavors. I think you proved yourself in a relatively short, every sleep compared to everybody I considered a relatively short period of time since I've been here for a very long time in this chamber. But I have seen colleagues come and go many, many, many times over the years. And I can truly say that you have been among the most excellent public servants. You have been such an excellent representative of your constituents. I won't repeat the beautiful resolution that was articulated this evening. But I can't help myself but to mention a couple of things. I'll never forget that night, sitting at my dining room table on cushions because the meeting went on forever and ever when we were discussing and considering the Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. Someone the mayor knows a little bit about and spent much of her time and talent on herself. But anyway, I cannot recall that many amendments from one alder on a particular item during an actual council meeting. I can think of records for budget, some budget nights that we've had here where a couple of alders had dozens of amendments, believe it or not. But that was unbelievable. And the fact that you fought so ably to save wetlands in the Hartmire area is obviously one of your many lasting legacies that I can't help but mention. The other one is, I have seen enough colleagues again come and go that would be susceptible, what I would call, and forgive me if it's offensive to anyone, but nimbyism. And the fact that you stuck your neck out for unsheltered persons and realized that it was the right thing to do and the best opportunity at the time, given the circumstances at the height of the pandemic, to use the First Street Garage as a temporary men's shelter and then supported more affordable housing proposals in your 12th district than I can keep track of, including, of course, the tiny home village, something that I'm sure in many respects, some of your constituents were not excited about and because of the stereotypes of unsheltered persons and so forth. So I won't belabor the point simply to say that I think you have shown your courage here that you have richly deserved, what I know will be only, I'm pretty sure of it, if I know you well, a temporary retirement from public service. And I want to congratulate you on your now-at-least retirement from the council, leaving such a legacy of accomplishment in so many areas. The community was blessed by your commitment to public service, especially your constituents in your district. And I personally will miss working with you and wish you all Godspeed and congratulate your family on having you back, especially in the evenings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Verveer. Alder Abbas?
Thank you so much. It's a bittersweet feeling, emotional feeling, leaving council. Thank you, Alder Verveer. Thank you, Alder Carter. Also, thank you, Alder Haley and Alder Benford. And thank you all the colleagues for working with me. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for your leadership also for the council and working with me when I was council president. So I appreciate that. I will start with my dear wife, Holly. I think so a lot of my constituents, they praise about my work. Nothing could have been done without her. She is the true public servant. We had a toddler, and then she was pregnant and morning sick, and she let me go out and do an election campaign and do the knocking the doors. And you know how tough it is during the winter. I was new in Madison, doesn't know what progressive day is, doesn't know the political landscape, just put my name on the ballot and just want to work for people. And the only way I can get elected, by knocking the door. And I knock the district four times, all district, again and again and again and again. Did not have money first time I run the election, just have friends, family, raise, little bit money. But I was never been alone. She was my strong supporter, and she gave me that power to do it. And without her, she is the true public servant for me. And without her, nothing could have been done. So I appreciate her and my kids. Then I also appreciate my constituent as an immigrant coming to Madison. I didn't came directly from Pakistan to Madison, but from New York City. The love I received from Neighborhood Association, the long-lasting friendship, as Jeff mentioned, Jeff Arlington. I'm not an alder, we are family. These people in my district, they are family. This Neighborhood Association I work, they are family. They stood with me, they welcomed me, they helped me. They helped me to navigate and helped me to make the scene, what community really want. And that is the core of our job. And that's what I focus at, what my district want, how could I best serve my district. We're being through some tough situation, learning curve. Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan was really a learning process, zoning and working with planning staff. Of course, I acknowledge I have a strong personality. I want to see things the way my constituents want, but also figuring out how the process work. A recent example is I came back from Pakistan and official mapping of the road was something I thought I understand the zoning and everything, but then I just came across official mapping thing. And I was like, no, we can get a better deal with working with developer and change the road left and right. Which later I realized was a very heavy political lift, was not easy. But my constituent wanted, and I delivered. I fought for them. I was like, no, this is important. I know, and I really appreciate staff, planning staff especially. Really, really appreciate because that increased immense amount of work on their side. And they delivered. So we have a really good staff and all the city staff I appreciate. I worked very closely with Community Development, Gmail, Lynette. Thank you so much. But also other city staff too. So really appreciate working with me. I also appreciate Jeff, Beth, Beth, Bonnie, Kim, and Ankita for coming today and speaking. It really means a lot to me. And also Eacon Park Neighborhood Association, they did an honoring resolution for me. So thank you, Neighborhood Association. One last thing I will also mention. For us, as immigrant, person of color, understanding the system, how the system work, during this election, during Governor Rivers, I went to university, talked to Asian community, South Asian community, went various places trying to mobilize immigrant community. I tried to tell them, this particular system in America, if we don't know the system, we need to be part of the system to make sure everybody have an opportunity and have a seat on the table. It is extremely critical. We have a lot of good people here who take care of us, but we need to take care of our own self. We need to run for the office. We need to be on this seat, and we need to make sure our voices get heard. And of course, in the end, environment is really personal to me. That's my day job. So I really push hard on environmental justice issues and really making sure the future of not only Madison, environmental decision we make today here in this city, it have impact regional, but in fact, global. So we need to keep moving city in the right direction. And really appreciate all the constituent. I receive overwhelming amount of phone calls, text message, emails. And I really appreciate these year working with my own constituent, but also working as my role in council president with the other city, people within the city who reach out to me and have a discussion with me. And I promise this is the last thing, I said twice last, this is the last. Last is, I would like to really thank Karen. Where is Karen? Karen is not here. She's somewhere there, but she's not here. And Debbie. Debbie was here, five minutes ago. It's all disappeared. All bail out on me. There you go, both of them. Thank you, both of you. Yeah, what an entrance. Thank you, both of you. I know we had a really, really rough and tough ride when I was council president. We are short on the staff. We have a new alder, there's a lot of ask to the council office. I appreciate both of you a lot. It was a crisis moment because we have a COVID. We have Black Lives Matter movement. There's a lot of legislative work happening. We are being through emergency, and we have a council. I will say council was also in an emergency role. You both really help a lot, me, also all the council. You really help the council, and by helping council, help the city. So I appreciate both of you a lot, and I really enjoyed working with both of you. And last but not least, Alder Verveer, thank you for you checking agenda item after Lisa left. You fill that gap and keep us moving forward. So I appreciate you as well. And I appreciate friendship on this council. So I'm not, this is not a goodbye. This is, I'm gonna see you guys again. Community service is important to me, and I will stay engaged. And I know sometimes we disagree, but there are a lot of things where we collaboratively work. Body One Camera is one of them. And Alder Evers, I appreciate you too. I like your flexibility working and bringing together. So thank you for your engagement also. So thank you all with that. Thank you so much. Can I make one small request? Can I take picture with all of you? Perfect, thank you so much.
We'll just stand informal for a photo moment. While the council is taking its seat again, let me also add my thanks, Alder Abbas, for your public service and for serving as my alder. We have had remarks. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we record the unanimous vote in favor. And that brings us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals for any items on today's agenda? Seeing none. We're on to the presentation of the consent agenda, President Furman.
A consent agenda is moved with a recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak; two, items which alders have separated out for discussion/debate purposes. This document lists agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item 26, Legislative File 74301, removing embedded annual license fees and assign the Board of Health to establish annual fees. Report of the Board of Health for Madison and Dane County, recommended adoption. Agenda item 41, Legislative File 74750, change alder terms. Agenda correction, 14 votes required. Agenda item 61, Legislative File 74582, authorizing and awarding $13 million, $960,000 in sewer system revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2022-D, and establishing interest rates thereon. Report of the Finance Committee is recommended adoption. Legislative File number, Agenda Item 66, Legislative File Number 74670, substitute, authorizing the execution of a development agreement with Mortenson Development, Inc. And it's assigns for the redevelopment of the state street campus parking facility. Adopt, recommended action is to adopt the substitute. Agenda item 74, actually, I'm sorry, the wrong section. Agenda item 82, Legislative File 74423, substitute, Transportation Demand Management Program. Report of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, adopt substitute. Agenda item 96, Legislative File 74912, authorizing the City of Madison Planning Division to prepare the Northeast Area Plan. This is an agenda correction. It changes the Plan Commission referral date from December 12th to January 9th. The Plan Commission remains the lead committee. Other dates remain the same. Board of Public Works on 12/14, Community Development Block Grant Committee on January 5th, and the Common Council on January 17th. Items excluded by the request of alders are due to speakers registered by 7:45 p.m. on December 6th. Second, sorry. Legislative, Agenda Item 41, Legislative File 74750, change alder terms and elections, Alder Haley. Agenda Item 58, Legislative File 74456, affordable housing, speakers registered. Legislative File, Agenda Item 70, Legislative File 74702, allocation of funds to support community-based organizations focused on youth, young adult and adult employment services, RFP. Alder Evers and speakers registered. Agenda Item 74, Legislative File 74696, confirmation of transit chief operating officer. This is a confirmation hearing. Report of the Finance Committee is recommended adoption. Agenda Item 75, Legislative File 74753, confirmation of the Director of Human Resources. Confirmation hearing. Report of the Finance Committee is recommended adoption. Agenda Item 80, Legislative File 74410, direction to implement the metro network redesign in summer 2023. Alder Haley. Agenda Item 82, Legislative File 74423, Transportation Demand Management Program. Speakers registered. I have a bunch of items that are being introduced from the floor this evening. Legislative File 75038, amending the 2023 adopted operating budget to allocate an additional $91,078 to public health Madison Dane County for the purpose of expanding funding for violence prevention services, funded through a corresponding reduction in the common council budget. Alder Figaro Cole, refer to the Board of Public Health for Madison Dane County on February 1st, the Finance Committee on January 9th, and the Common Council on February 7th. Legislative File 75053, by title only, establishing a grant program to support accessible taxi cabs in Madison. Alder Paulson, refer to the Finance Committee on February 13th, Disability Rights Commission on January 26th, Transportation Commission on January 11th. Transportation Commission on January 11th, and the Common Council on February 28th. Legislative File 75054, defining appropriate use of alder blogs and allowable topics of alder hosted public meetings during election period. Alder Furman, refer to the Common Council Executive Committee on December 13th and the Common Council on January 3rd. Legislative File 75055, amending the 2023 adopted operating budget to reallocate $15,000 within the Common Council 2023 operating budget for intern stipends. Refer to the Finance Committee on January 9th and the Common Council on January 17th. It's being introduced by Alder Wehili. And then Legislative File 75056, amending the 2023 adopted operating budget to transfer $74,460 from the Common Council to the Department of Civil Rights for the purpose of funding a 1.0 FTE equal opportunities investigator position. Alder Wehili, refer to the Finance Department on January 9th and the Common Council on January 17th.
All right.
That's our long agenda.
So because I had trouble following that, and I imagine others did as well, we're gonna try and review. And Alder Furman, I may need your assistance on some of these. So the first section is recommendations that are different from what is printed on the agenda. So on item 26, the recommendation is to adopt. Skipping item 41 because that's separated. On item 61, the recommendation should, to be adopt the second substitute.
61, there is no substitute.
Oh, I'm sorry. On item 82. Sorry. So on item 61, the recommendation?
Is just recommended action as adoption from the Finance Committee meeting.
Is to adopt. And then on 66, we have a substitute.
That's correct.
And then on 82, it's the second substitute.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there other recommendations that are different from the printed agenda?
The referral on 96 for the Plan Commission is not going to be December 12th. It will be January 9th.
Okay. So on that section, one more time. Item 26, the recommendation is to adopt. Item 61, the recommendation is to adopt. Item 66 is a substitute. Item 82 is the second substitute. And then item 96 will go to Plan Commission on January 9th. Alder Wehili, a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, for item 70.
We're not, we're not there yet, Alder.
No, no, I know. But then what I'm asking is, are we voting on the original item or the substitute?
Alder, that item will be excluded from the consent agenda?
Okay.
Okay. So everybody's clear on the recommendations that are different from the agenda? Okay. And then the items that will be excluded from the consent agenda are 41, 58, 70, 74, 75, 80, and 82. And then we have a number of introductions from the floor, which I will not repeat. Are there any additional exclusions from the consent agenda? Alder Wehili, is your hand still up? Or do you have an exclusion? Alder Foster?
I'd like to exclude the introduction of the intern amendment. One that's being introduced tonight. I want to talk about the referrals.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Alder Carter?
Number 41.
Number 41 is excluded. Are there any additional exclusions from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. President Furman?
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And we will go on to public comment. Forgive me while I refresh briefly. All right. The first item that we have speakers on tonight is item 58, which is awarding funds from the Affordable Housing Fund to various projects. And our speaker wishing to address the council is Jesse Ransom from Middleton. Do we have Jesse either in person or online?
There is no one by that name on Zoom.
Okay. Then the next item we have speakers on is item 70, which is allocating funds to community-based organizations through the Youth, Young Adult, and Employment Services, RFP. Our first registrant is Mia Saul of Fitchburg, representing Operation Fresh Start, to be followed by Baltasar de Anda Santana, to be followed by Margarita Avila. Do we have Mia Saul?
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hi. So I'm from, I'm in an organization called Operation Fresh Start. I'm currently in the program. It's a program for young people that need extra help in school and such. We do work for like conservation and construction crews. It's a way to get our high school diploma. And along with that, we learn skills like learning how to work in a team and being like. Sorry, I was not expecting to be on this early. But we work with like the Dane County on conservation. I'm on a conservation crew. And we work with the Dane County on doing like conservation things, like things that help the environment. It's a really good program for a young person like me. I dropped out of high school, didn't have any plans for myself, and I found this program through school. They suggested it to me. And they sent high school diploma. And I thought like, yeah, this is perfect. High school diploma, easy way to get out. And when I got there, I've been there for seven months now. And I've learned so much about myself through the program. And with doing that, it was so helpful. Like, we, we have to get our, we get an option to get our driver's license through the program. It's, I'm doing, we're doing job shadows and stuff. Like, I recently did a job shadow at Channel 27. And I wouldn't have been able to do that without the program. And it's become such a safe place for me and a lot of other young people that go there currently. And I really just want the organization to be widespread and be able to help young people like myself for the future. And I want it to be that safe place for other people like it is for me.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's, I'm grateful for the opportunity. Thank you for letting me speak. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Baltasar de Anda Santana of District 14, representing the Latino Academy of Workforce Development, to be followed by Margarita Avila, to be followed by Vanessa Vaughn. Baltasar?
So it looks like I had to promote Baltasar to panelist because of his Zoom version he should be having on. Yep.
Go ahead, Baltasar.
Thank you very much. My name is Baltasar de Anda Santana, and I'm the Executive Director and Co-Founder of the Latino Academy of Workforce Development. I want to first thank the City of Madison Mayor Satya Rhodes Kangway, staff and members of this committee who care so deeply for our community and who volunteer so many hours to make our community stronger. I want to thank all of the work that the CSC Committee and the Finance Committee put into this difficult process. I'm here to urge your support to alternate resolution 74702, as proposed by Alders Evers, Carter, Willie, and David, to amend the 2023 adapted to bring budget to allocate additional funding to the Community Development Division for the purpose of expanding funding for our community-based organizations, providing vital employment services to unemployed and underemployed residents in our community. We further ask that these funds be directed to adult and young adult programming that meets the needs of individuals with employment barriers and further that be directed to organizations with a demonstrated track record of delivering high-quality results by the BIIPAC members of our community. The Latino Academy has received critical support from the City of Madison since 2011, funding that has contributed to the ability to meet the growing demand for services for more Madison residents. You will hear from a few of these residents tonight about how Latino Academy programs have helped them find great jobs and better living conditions for their families. In 2022, we became South Central Wisconsin newest Latino-led community nonprofit organization after over a decade of experience as a program within the Vera Cornejo Center. We have since over a year double enrollment growing during the pandemic. In 2021, we served 2,209 individuals with education program in case management support, industrial line training, and soft skills development scoring, and securing 80% average graduation rates. All of our staff bring the lived experience as Latino immigrants, and we focus on strong employee education and community partnerships, including the local workforce development board. Our approach takes the long-term view. We don't settle for an easy job placement. We work with Madison residents so that they have the skills and support they need to career opportunities that pay at least $20 per hour plus great benefits. This is the Latino Academy programs, and this is how we will achieve equity in our city. In the past seven years, we have never missed target outcomes in programs that have received City of Madison funding.
You have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. Like everyone in this meeting tonight, the Latino Academy is committed to the futures of Madison adults and young adults. Please support the alternative resolution 74702. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Margarita Avila from District 14, representing the Latino Academy of Workforce Development, to be followed by Vanessa Vaughn, to be followed by Laura Dunn. Margarita? Doesn't look like we have Margarita in the room.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Margarita Avila, and I am the Director of Workforce Development of the Latino Academy of Workforce Development. At the Latino Academy, as Baltasar mentioned, we provide bilingual adult education, job training, and employment programs in Dane County and including Madison. Additionally, we provide employment support to Latinos and non-Latinos in the community. And our approach combines initial personal license screening with soft skills development and occupational training. Tonight, I would like to share a very powerful statement by our student, Miriam Morales. Unfortunately, unfortunately, she wasn't able to join us tonight. Hello, my name is Miriam Morales. Since 2019, I have been a student at the Latino Academy. Back in 2019, I was a dental assistant. The Latino Academy sent me a flyer about offering commercial driver's license classes. And immediately, I knew this was going to be the path to achieve my goal of financial stability and a better future for my son and myself. And a year later, I obtained my CDL Class B. The process wasn't easy. I was working full-time and taking classes in the evenings. The Latino Academy supported me with daycare for my son. I realized, where else can I ask for? Accessible education and providing support with my son so I can obtain my CDL. Many times, the emotions will get to me, and they still do when I stop to think about it. I am very grateful for this opportunity from the bottom of my heart for the Latino Academy for encouraging me to complete the program and for having the Latino Academy as my support system. I knew it was going to be up to me to take advantage of this great opportunity. And of course, I was willing to put in all the efforts. In 2020, the Latino Academy introduced me and prepared me with the skills I needed to land a paid internship for, a paid internship with the Dane County Highway Department. I knew this was a great opportunity for my family and for myself. Through this internship, I also obtained my CDL Class A. And in 2020, I became the first Latina woman to graduate from the internship program. As of today, I hold a position as a skilled laborer with the Dane County Highway Department, where I am earning a great salary plus wonderful benefits.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Thank you.
We'll pause.
Margarita, if you could unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep. We lost you just after I gave you the time. So we'll give you 30 seconds.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much. So this was a statement that Miriam Morales, our student, sent to us. And she, as I said, she unfortunately wasn't able to join us this evening. But she wants to, you know, thank everyone for your support. I also want to thank you guys as the staff of the Latino Academy for your continued support and for continue letting us providing trainings and, you know, providing and making Madison a better place to live and work for our community. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Vanessa Vaughn of District 14, representing the Latino Academy of Workforce Development, to be followed by Laura Dunn, to be followed by Eric Romero. Vanessa?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Vanessa Vaughn, and I'm the Education Manager at the Latino Academy of Workforce Development. Our student, Cielo Lasso, had a commitment today, so she cannot be here with us. But she asked me to read her statement. Cielo is a former student at the Latino Academy, and she's currently working as a caseworker specialist at Community Action Coalition. My name is Cielo Lasso. I'm from Peru. I came to Madison in January of 2019. The first place I got help with the transition was Latino Academy. I took English as a second language, CPR classes, leadership training, nutrition classes, and received services to help me get a job. My son also took construction and CPR classes. All trainings were free. As newcomers, it would have been impossible to afford these trainings. I remember that I had a problem with the landlord, and Mr. Garcia helped me solve it. Latino Academy helped me advance my career. I'm a caseworker specialist for Community Action Coalition. Being a student at the Latino Academy allowed me to learn about the needs of our Latino community, and this facilitates my work as a caseworker. Latino Academy, in addition to my training, is financial support for our community. As a caseworker, I encourage my clients to contact Latino Academy for English classes, GED courses, CDL classes, rental assistance, utility assistance, job search, and other types of assistance. There are more immigrants in Madison, and Latino Academy is a great support for Spanish speakers. This is the only place where the community can receive bilingual trainings. Thank you, City of Madison, for supporting our community.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Laura Dunn of District 14, representing the Latino Academy of Workforce Development, to be followed by Eric Romero, to be followed by Terrence Warren. Laura?
Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Laura Dunn. Thanks for, thanks for having me here today. I'm a student of the Latino Academy. I consider myself still a student because I take classes every time they give me an opportunity to take another one. The first class that I took at the Latino Academy was my GED, my CPR classes. The class that changed my life, my life, was the CDL. my life, my life, was the CDL class that I took. I get my, um, CDL Class A and B with endorsement. Um, also, I receive a internship, uh, uh, opportunity to get a job at Dane County Highway Department. Right now, I'm a skilled labor employee, and I just want to say thank you very much for supporting the Latino Academy. After I got my job at Dane County, my child, my life changed. My family have a better health insurance. I was able to buy my house with, uh, a better job pay, and I just want to thank you very much for supporting the Latino Academy. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Eric Romero of District fifteen, to be followed by Terrence Warren, to be followed by Tristan Greer. Eric?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, hey, everyone. My name is Eric. Um, I'm here to talk about Operation Fresh Start, which is a program that I'm doing right now. Um, I just kind of wanted to talk about my experience before OFS and kind of how they helped me. So, um, it started. Okay. So, uh, I was in my freshman year of high school, and I was having a lot of fun. You know, I enjoyed, uh, I enjoyed my freshman year, but I wasn't doing the best academically. Uh, I never really was good at school. I always struggled with it. Um, and so it was always a struggle for me to kind of sit down at a desk all day and listen to a teacher, you know, tell me stuff. So OFS really helped me. Um, the most important thing about the program to me is how they, you know, recognize that everybody has their own different way of learning. Um, and that's the main problem I had with, you know, public schools is they teach everybody the same. And, uh, that's a big thing that they focus on at Operation Fresh Start. It's kind of personalizing that experience and helping everybody get the resources that they need, because, you know, not everybody's the same, and they really helped me kind of focus my goals and my ideas for my future that I didn't even know I, you know, I didn't have a clear view of it, and they really narrowed it, narrowed it down, I guess is the right word to say. Um, you know, the first thing they ask you, because, you know, you have your interviews against the program, and the first thing they ask you is, what are you, what are you going to be doing after, after OFS? And they're not focused on what you're doing now or what you were doing in the past. They want to really help you move forward to get to where you want to go. And I really appreciate them for helping me with that. Um, my goals for the future after the program, um, would be to get into real estate. I want to be a real estate agent, own some properties, and I've talked to the people there at OFS, and they've just been super excited to help me. I got set up with a job shadow with a real estate agent, so I was just tagging along for the whole day when he was showing me, you know, different properties, the insider trade secrets, all these things, and, uh, it was great. And funny enough, the, the guy that they set me up with for the job shadow was a past participant, so we were kind of chopping it up about how it is to, you know, be in the program and just talking about life and stuff. So, yeah, I'm really grateful for OFS. They really changed my life, um, helped me find, you know, what I'm passionate about, and they're helping me work towards my goals. So I really appreciate them, and I appreciate you guys, uh, considering, you know, helping us out. And, uh, yeah, it's great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Terrence Warren of District twenty, representing the Urban League of Greater Madison, to be followed by Tristan Greer, to be followed by Dr. Ruben Anthony. Terrence?
There is no one by that name on Zoom.
Right. How about Tristan Greer of District thirteen, representing the Urban League of Greater Madison?
Uh, same. There is no one by that name on Zoom.
All right. Do we have Dr. Ruben Anthony?
Yes, we do.
So, Dr. Ruben Anthony of District fourteen.
Good evening. I'm Ruben Anthony, the President and CEO of the Urban League of Greater Madison, and I'm here to support Resolution number seventy-four seven oh two. I'd like to first acknowledge the hard work of the Community Services Committee and the city staff in making tough choices and funding many of the wonderful nonprofits in this community. It's a lot of them, and I know it's a lot of hard work. However, I would like to express my disappointment about the defunding of our Construction Employment Initiative Program, uh, referred to as CEI. CEI is a partnership between the Urban League, the Latino Academy for Workforce Development, and Operation Fresh Start. Uh, we've had a successful partnership for over seven years. Uh, the program has, uh, an established track record where we've been exceptional in helping transform the lives of many residents. We have helped many workers find careers, not just jobs in the trade. We are the only construction training program in Madison where the trainees, trainees get hands-on experience. Our trainees have, um, built homes on the south side. They've worked on the SSM remodel and have done just a whole lot of innovative work while they trained. In fact, the CEI program has been critical to helping develop a pipeline of Black and Brown and women workers who traditionally have been locked out of the construction industry. Not having this program will be a missed opportunity because the trades will continue to be an occupation that provides stable and high-wage careers now and in the future. You can drive around the City of Madison, and you can kind of see, uh, what things are. Uh, currently, the, the man for construction workers is critical. As fast as we can get, um, workers trained, uh, the industry is ready to hire them. And again, you know, um, it's booming, and that's going to continue to happen. Was very disappointed that, uh, we scored, um, probably the fourth highest score in adult programming, but yet, you know, um, there was criteria that eliminated us from, uh, getting the funding. Uh, and I know that the scoring, um, you know, was not the only factor, um, that the, um, staff, city staff used. Um, I just find it hard to believe that we, uh, would not be scored well on other factors mentioned. You know, um, definitely, um, you know, they say they look at things through an equity lens, and, um, eighty percent of the participants in our program are BIPOC. Not to mention that we are the oldest, um, African-American organization, nonprofit organization in the city. Uh, moving forward, I hope that there's more transparency and, and clear examples are given how these other factors supersede high score. Um,
You have about fifteen seconds left.
Finally, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just troubled by the adverse effects that these, uh, this, uh, not having this program there to train folks will have on the entry barriers to Brown and Black people, uh, in the trade. So tonight, I ask you to approve Resolution, Resolution number seventy-four seven oh two proposed by Alders Evers and, uh, and Carter and, and others. So thank you for giving me a chance to weigh in.
Thank you. And I do see that we have, uh, some of the folks we skipped here. We'll come back to you, um, uh, and, and not lose you. Uh, but next is Ladaro Taylor of District fourteen, representing the Urban League of Greater Madison, to be followed by Lori Schwartz, to be followed by Beverly Hutcherson. Do we have Ladaro?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, hello. My name is Ladaro Taylor. Um, I graduated from the Urban League, um, Foundation for the Trades Program in two thousand and seventeen. Um, I went on to become an electrician. I got my journeyman license in two thousand and twenty-two, um, in March. From there, I started two businesses, one with a partner and one as a startup company and out here in Phoenix where I live currently. Um, with the trades, especially, uh, dealing with, uh, Terry and, um, I don't want to forget no names, but dealing with, especially with Terry, um, with Urban League and Dr. Anthony, I was able to start my own company, uh, buy my own house out here, and I was able to, like, stylize myself as being independent and get pretty much skills that can pretty much help me for the rest of my life. And that's pretty much all I got.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Lori Schwartz of District eleven, representing the Madison Starlings Volleyball Club, to be followed by Beverly Hutcherson, to be followed by Olivia Grace Partee. Lori?
Yes.
Ah, there you are. Hi.
Hi. Um, this might be a little unusual. Um, we are not funded, but I'm here to tell you, uh, thank you, uh, genuinely. Last year, uh, we came out of COVID, and it was tough. We would not have survived and grown to what we are without your funding last year. And, um, you hear a lot about what you can't do in government, but what you did is you leveraged us to reach gyms for kids to participate. And I am here because it's important that you know that this isn't just sports. This is about minority girls especially in our community. My daughter, having been one of them, I watched them, and there's nothing like being a parent watching your child not have the same access that you do. And so, um, it is a passion for me before that, but it is very much a passion that I will never give up. And it is a family, and we are grateful because you created a summer opportunity for our kids last year that was a pilot that we would have never been able to try without your funding. And I am also here to keep people aware of us because there are many of us with privilege, myself included, that I want to continue to ask to sponsor a kid to support us. They're doing a hundred serves this Sunday, and last year we were a hundred and thirty-five kids, and we are two hundred kids, uh, that strong, and so many coaches and people volunteering. We become an entity that's making a difference while one of our high schools still in Madison had no, no African-American young women on it. There are two, though, that were very representative of their communities that did not over a decade ago, and I do credit that to the team of so many people, including all of you, because you make it exist. You use your power, and it's not always money that makes the difference. Now, I understand money's important. I'm not here to say it's different, but I want you to know that we're grateful and that we're going to keep working differently. And just like when in my job, we worked differently in government to create Safe Harbor, which worked harder, made the adults work harder. We created a club that works harder so that kids can be kids. It should be about fun and access. And we talk about it being sports. I want you to know it's not sports. It's about access. It's weekly reports. It's time. It's mentoring, and it's the job skills that keeps the kid, thank you, keeps the kid driving towards a dream as opposed to working in fast food. So, um, I call on our faith communities especially, and those of us with privilege, to sponsor a kid for five dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Beverly Hutcherson of Verona, Wisconsin, representing Operation Fresh Start, to be followed by Olivia Grace Partee, to be followed by Oscar Morelles. Beverly?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of Operation Fresh Start. I have been a board member for six years, and, um, and many of the stories that you've heard today and are going to be spoke of today really speak to essentially the return on investment for funding organizations such as this. Operation Fresh Start has been in existence for fifteen years, um, giving young people from the ages of seventeen to twenty-four i- in the name of Fresh Start so that they can procure a high school diploma and skills that will allow them to move towards self-sufficiency. And as you heard in some of the stories that have been told and stories that will be told, those individuals stay in our communities, and they invest through home ownership, as well as the generational impact that you're having on people who are improving the socioeconomics of not only themselves, but their families. And so I don't even need the two minutes to just say that this is a strong return on investment for our community, and I hope that you all support, um, this particular amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Olivia Grace Partee of District two, representing Operation Fresh Start, to be followed by Oscar Morelles, to be followed by Michael Lipp. Olivia?
Olivia, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Olivia, we need you to unmute yourself. If not, we'll come back to you and go to Oscar Morelles of District ten, representing the Omega School, to be followed by Michael Lipp, to be followed by Greg Merkel. Oscar, welcome.
Hi, my name is Oscar Morelles. I've been the Executive Director of Omega School for twenty-eight years, and I'm one of five agency directors who've been working in this city for over twenty-five years. Um, I'm sixty-seven and a half years old, and this will be my last appearance before this esteemed body. For many of you new to the council, I currently serve as a mayor appointment to the Overture Board. I served for two and a half years on the cultural plan, two years on the historic preservation plan. I was a member of the Community Development Agency that approved a hundred and thirty-five million-dollar bond for the Overture Center, and I'm proud of my volunteer service on, on the board. I also want to thank the city. Uh, uh, last year or two years ago, I received the Alex Olson Award for the Promotion of Tolerance and Just Community during the pandemic, and I saw a lot of you on Zoom, and you looked pretty small, so I want to thank you, thank you in person. Uh, for those that don't know, I was a poet laureate of Madison from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, and I had several dozen opportunities here before the council, and I want to thank Angelo Tudel Vazquez, who, uh, shared a poem earlier. Um, I do want to thank the council for over three decades of support for Omega School. Um, you know, we're, along with other agencies, we're, we're here doing, really providing a second chance and a second opportunity for people to transform their lives. And, uh, so I really appreciate all the longstanding support we've gotten from the city. Um, we have a graduation this Thursday. It'll be our first since the pandemic. We have over a hundred graduates who are now doing something with their lives. They were lost. They were stuck in dead-end jobs and, and stuck in unfortunate circumstances, but now they have a second chance to kind of move on. So finally, uh, just want, want to encourage you to support the resolution. Um, I'm a realist and, and I'm a happy optimist, and, uh, I realize the votes aren't there, but, uh, I, I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Michael Lipp of District eleven, representing Operation Fresh Start, to be followed by Greg Merkel. We have Michael Lipp?
Good evening, and thank you for serving as Alders for the City of Madison as well as the mayor. My name is Mike Lipp. I'm a retired school teacher. I worked forty-one years in public schools, the last twenty-five at Madison West. I taught chemistry, was Science Department Chair. I also coached fifty different sports teams, was Student Council Advisor, and was an athletic director. Since I retired in two thousand and fifteen, I've been a substitute teacher working in twenty different schools in the district. For the past five and a half years, I have proudly served on the Board of Directors of Operation Fresh Start. When I joined the board in two thousand and seventeen, it was in the middle of a capital campaign to raise four and a half million dollars to move into a renovated facility to increase the number of youth that it serves from two hundred to four hundred individuals a year. This has been accomplished, and OFS has also taken on a new initiative, assisting our youth in attaining a driver license. As schools no longer teach driver training, the reality is many teens in poverty, particularly many of our Black and Latinx students, are driving around Madison without a license. This invariably leads to police stops and the issuance of tickets, which do not get paid, and create overdue fines and bench warrants. This is another area where OFS has had a significant positive impact on our sixteen, twenty-four-year-old population. We work with Madison Municipal Court to reduce the backlog of fines that our students have accumulated and put them on a payment plan to get their obligation eliminated. It's a win-win. They learn to drive safely, and the societal obligation is eliminated. I'm going to pivot here. Every year towards the end of winter, Madison's fifty-two school principals receive a budget memo outlining their allocation for the ensuing school year. This is the number of full-time equivalent staff. They will be funded to have at their respective buildings. As department chair of a large academic department, I would help craft what the Science Department would look like moving forward, what classes were to be taught, and how many sections of each. For example, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen FTEs with eighty-five, ninety, ninety classes. I can also say that we would usually have enough requests from students for five to six technical education staff members, typically classes in construction, auto mechanics, beginning electrical work, drafting, woodworking, et cetera, because the schools have so much pressure to prepare their students for post-secondary education. Madison West never had more than two tech ed teachers, and many students-
You have about thirty seconds left.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of the students wanting to go into the trades for a career were denied this pathway. They were told that they could pick it up when they went to Madison College or that trade unions had apprenticeship programs. I can tell you that schools provide significant time and talent towards STEM career exploration and training, but do not provide programming with a focus for tactile learners and those interested in the trades or other hands-on work. and those interested in the trades or other hands-on work.
That's your time, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Greg Merkel of District 16.
Hello, I'm Greg Merkel. I'm executive director of Operation Fresh Start. Thank you for this opportunity. Last time I was before council, it was a very auspicious moment. Alder Brian Benford was leading the charge in a resolution honoring Operation Fresh Start's 50 years of great service to the committee and partnership with the City of Madison. It was wonderful. I took that resolution back to our young people and said, they care. Many of our young people don't realize how much the city can care about their future. And that was a moment where you showed you cared. Today's less auspicious. Within the recommendations is a cut for Operation Fresh Start programming of $100,000. Specifically, the OFS legacy program has a $50,000 cut or a 50% cut. And that's the program which you heard about from Mia and Eric. I'd like to say this process is better than five years ago and I appreciate that. Two things really make it better. One, this is the only process in the city which recognizes emerging adults, older youth, as their own entity. And I really appreciate that that exists and that there's a recognition that this population has different needs and different hopes and promises. I'd like to thank Madam Mayor for adding $250,000 into her budget to focus specifically on this population. So those are wonderful. If you want to ask about process, I can talk about that later and I'd love to. The reality is out of this process, that $250,000 was cut by $120,000, which went towards younger youth programming. What's before you is a substitute resolution which gives the committee $159,000 to figure out where to put. Doesn't mean that Operation Fresh Start is going to get it. My hope is no matter what, this emerging youth population gets a cut of that because they are under-resourced and they need the help. They so need the help. So I ask for you to just provide the committee that opportunity. I realize that there's some personal politics. Some people want this group. Some people don't want that group to end up with the funds. Maybe some folks don't want Fresh Start to get it. I don't know. Please provide the committee. One thing that I heard through this process is if we only had more money, if we only had more money, if the committee only had more money, this is your chance. Let the committee work. Let it have the more money, just a little bit to do a little bit more. Specifically, Fresh Start, our proposal is to serve 50 young people. 50% cut means 25 young people. Of these, we know because they haven't graduated high school, 25% of them will end up in prison, active in violent criminal activities. This is violence reduction. Half will end up in poverty. Half will end up unemployed. So I ask of you, is it Mia or Eric? Because that's what we will face with this cut.
That's your time. Thank you. Great. Let's try again for Terrence Warren from District 20. Is there a Terrence Warren on the Zoom?
Nope. We do not have anyone by that name. We have Tristan, though.
Great. So we'll go next to Tristan Greer from District 13. I think we have you twice, so let's have only one of your devices unmuted, please.
Yep. If you could mute your other device, that would be helpful. And you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Wait, wait, wait. Is that, is that better?
If you can mute your other device that you're joining on.
I think, is that, that should be good there?
I think so. Yep.
Okay, yeah. I mean, good evening to the council members again. It's good to be back. About three years or so ago, I was meeting in front of this council also. And that was before the Ocean Truman Project started. And I was a first-year carpenter apprentice at that time, going through the Urban League of the Greater Madison. And giving off what they have, give it to me. I have had the liberty of gaining the knowledge that I needed to provide for me and my family to get through to this day. And as I sat here listening to the multiple people talking about the different programs, Operation Fresh Start is which I had something to do with through the Urban League and the Latino Academy, which I had something to do with through the Urban League, to both offer their own respective help for me with the CDLS, with the Latino Academy and just the onsite, working through Operation Fresh Start. For me, the Urban League has been a knockout. The trades program specifically has been such a, such a blessing for myself, I would say, because of what the skills that they've taught me to get out into the world now. It's a little bit bothering when I hear they say, when people say there's not going to be funding for these programs because of all you see. If you love Madison, if you love Dane County, up and down East Wash, the Park, Park Street, everywhere around Madison, all you see is construction going on. Construction is everywhere around Madison, Dane County, Wisconsin, the world as we know. And because of the programs like the trade program, it gives people like myself who's come back, who has made a dramatic comeback from after doing 18 years straight in prison, to now being able to give back to the community in this way. Now I find myself knowing more about construction than anything. I'm a small business owner who just started up with the knowledge that I have learned through the help of the Urban League. So I would express to the council members that please do look into exactly what the foundation for the trade program is before you like make any dramatic decisions. And look at those people that has graduated and doing something out there in the world for their community now. And it has branched out.
You have about 20 seconds left.
Okay. As crazy as it is, it has branched from Madison all the way down. I think the guys in Phoenix, Arizona, with the help of the Urban League and their trade program. So again, I ask that all of you really consider funding the program for the next class and the next class and the next class as we see the world build. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Our final registrant wishing to speak on this item is Olivia Grace Partee. Do we have Olivia unmuted?
We do. Olivia, yep, there you go.
Hi, everyone. So I am part of Operation Fresh Start. I am very thankful for Operation Fresh Start because if I did not have the opportunity to get to work with them, I would not be working towards my high school diploma and not working towards going into childcare. I would still be living at home. I wouldn't be living on my own. So Operation Fresh Start has opened so many doors for me. And so I think we should really look into funding going towards Operation Fresh Start for their non-funding because it's just helped so many young kids know what they want to do with their life. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Those are all of our registrants on item 70. Are there questions for registrants on item 70? Seeing none, we'll go on to item 80, which is direction to implement the metro network redesign in summer of 2023. We have two registrants wishing to speak. We'll start with Adam Pagankopf of District Six, to be followed by Robbie Weber. Do we have Adam?
Yep. Adam, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Luke, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hi there. So I just wanted to speak in support of the network redesign final plan. I feel that this system will make the transit more useful for residents all over the city. We'll have more frequent direct buses and daytime service will be expanded significantly over the current system. And transfers will be able to be made throughout the city, making the bus more useful for many riders. This current plan was developed after extensive public input for a period of two years. And I feel that the plan has resulted in the best possible system. The current, the system as it stands now is inequitable and insufficient for Madison's current needs. The last major redesign was completed over 25 years ago in the late 1990s, resulting in an inefficient system that revolves around about 50-plus bus routes. In the current system, riders from disadvantaged groups take significantly longer to get to their destination and they have to take circuitous routes and lengthy transfers to go even short distances. The network redesign and coupled with the BRT will significantly increase access to jobs, groceries, childcare and much more for Madisonians who rely on the bus for transportation. Yeah, so it's fun to, in my comment there, just say that should proceed with the redesign as it's for you today.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robbie Weber of District Five.
Hi. This is short even for me. Thank you for considering this. I'm on the Transportation Commission and some of you know I'm a former alder. I'm also a transportation geek, which I will get to later for my other testimony. But I just want to say that I know that we've spent a lot of time doing this network redesign and there are always trade-offs. We all know that. Do you want to go to everybody's house individually? Probably can't do that. Do you want to have a bus coming every two minutes? Probably can't do that either. But we always have a trade-off between which things we want to prioritize. And we went through a very long process to decide what the network was going to look like. And I know that you all passed it. Now we're at the final stages and we looked at the Title VI analysis. And I do want to emphasize that we, the consultants and the city use the best data that they can possibly use. They went beyond the federal requirements. And there will always be some individuals, some locations and even some neighborhoods that may not get better service. But the purpose of the Title VI is to make sure that the new network redesign does not unduly burden any particular group, especially protected classes, people low income, people of color, people with disabilities. And you may hear that there are some things that people would like us to do that were not done. There is some, there are reasons that we cannot get the data. It is not possible to get some of that data. And in some cases, it is not legal to use the types of data that are being requested. So I urge you to pass the network redesign, to approve the Title VI, and also to ask city staff questions because they know how this analysis was done, why we made the decisions we did and what it's going to mean. So thank you for your time and you'll hear from me in a little while on another issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are our registrants on item 80. Are there questions for either of the registrants? Seeing none, we'll go on to item 82, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances, establishing a transportation demand management program. Our first registrant is Ian Jamison of District Six, to be followed by Kaylee Jamison, to be followed by Bill Connors. Ian?
Hi. I want to start by thanking the city and all the staff that were involved in this important effort. I know a lot of time is gone into it and a lot of amendments have been made. I enthusiastically support the proposed TDM program. I think it's critical for so many reasons. It's going to make it easier for folks to jump on public transit or walk and bike instead of taking car trips. It'll lessen congestion in our city and ensure that we grow sustainably while keeping Madison a livable place we all love. It will help us meet our climate obligations while keeping Madison green. And for all of those reasons, I urge you to adopt the program as is. The proposal represents a fair and well-earned compromise. If anything, I personally wish it was more aggressive in orienting away from single-occupant vehicle trips. However, I understand that competing interests, and I commend the city for seeking to find common ground and making over 40 changes, mostly based on feedback from folks that see this differently than I do. It's a fitting example of the cooperation and civility we've highlighted tonight. With that being said, further changes would undermine the program and much of its promise. We must include existing buildings under these regulations to create a standard, consistent process. Failing to do so means significantly limiting the carbon curbing potential of TDM. Keeping Madison sustainable and green means committing to programs proven to do just that. So we should say no to a sunset provision that would ensure this program is hobbled from the outset. And finally, we should push parking unbundling as much as possible. This is maybe the biggest driver of the carbon savings and making neighborhoods livable. We must resist efforts to undercut this option. In all, this is a wonderful program, a great testament to the tireless city staff who created and modified it, an unmissable opportunity to make Madison greener, safer and more livable. TDM programs have thrived across the country and in countless circumstances. It's time for Madison to take the leap and I urge you to join me in support and pass the TDM program tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kaylee Jamison of District Six, to be followed by Bill Connors, to be followed by Willem Okowitsch. Kaylee?
Hi, everyone. My name is Kaylee Jamison. I live in the Marquette neighborhood. And I'm speaking today also in enthusiastic support of the TDM plan. I was able to join a few previous presentations about this plan from the city and I was really encouraged and impressed by what I saw. I feel like this initiative is exactly what the city needs to meet our climate goals and remain a lovely and livable place as we grow. I've heard a lot of feedback at previous meetings from developers and I'm sure we'll hear some more tonight. But I wanted to just share thoughts just as a regular old Madison resident. The TDM policy has a potential to ensure that we accommodate the city's growth in a really smart way, focusing our land use on people rather than cars. Requiring building developers and owners to provide more non-car options and incentives is a great way to give Madison residents like me more freedom and choices in how we get around. Just from a personal anecdote, my husband and I moved three blocks a little more than a year ago from a bundled parking apartment to an unbundled unit. The unbundled parking helped us make a decision to give up our car. And we found since an incredible connection to our neighborhood and the businesses and people around us as we moved around by walking, biking and bus rather than private automobile. UW Madison's TDM program also worked perfectly on me. Even when I had a car, I rode my bicycle to the office at UW Hospital to avoid paying the parking fee. I think requiring buildings to make non-car transit options more available and easier to choose through incentives will go a long way, not just towards meeting our climate goals, but also in community connection and morale. I urge folks on the council tonight to vote in favor of creating a more sustainable, livable city for all of us with the TDM program. I feel particularly strong that the TDM needs to be a permanent program rather than a short-term pilot, since it will take several years for the policy's effects to become measurable over time. I also strongly encourage you to include existing buildings in this program when they change uses. City staff has already made quite a few changes to the TDM program to make it easier for the development community. If the current plan passes, I believe it's a fair compromise that will move the city forward and make it an even better place to live. I hope you all join in me, join me in supporting TDM tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bill Connors of District Four, representing Smart Growth Greater Madison, to be followed by William Okowitsch, to be followed by Robbie Weber.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I hope you will ask me many questions because three minutes is far too short a time to address a complex new program like this. First, I want to thank Philip Gritzmacher of the Transportation Department and members of Smart Growth for spending countless hours developing a shared understanding of how the proposed new program is supposed to work, sharing concerns and attempts to address those concerns to make this a better, more effective program. We are thankful for the changes that have been made thus far, but there are more concerns that have not been resolved. We know that all the following things will happen sometime in the future as a result of the new TDM program. of the new TDM program. Single parents who cannot use transit because they must pick up their kids before and after work will have to pay sometimes to park at work. There will be, there won't be enough parking spaces for two people sharing an apartment to both be able to park their cars at their apartment building. Businesses in new, large, mixed-use buildings will have to offer cash payments to their employees in lieu of free parking. The building owner will not be the one making the parking cash payout payments to the employees. Commercial spaces in neighborhoods all over the city will stay vacant for longer periods of time. Commercial tenants will choose to locate where they do not have to deal with the consequences of this program: in existing buildings in Madison that are exempt, and most existing buildings are going to stay exempt; in buildings in Middleton, Fitchburg, and Sun Prairie, or in other municipal, metropolitan areas, excuse me. Apartment residents will park cars on neighborhood streets to avoid paying a fee to park in the parking lot of their apartment building. All tenants in an apartment building will pay higher rents so that some of the tenants who want to use transit passes can get free, get them for free. The cost of all the carrots and sticks in the new TDM program to encourage people to change their transportation behavior will be paid for by commercial tenants, employees of commercial tenants, and apartment residents, not by the developers and building owners. Earlier, I emailed you changes that Smart Growth is requesting to the proposed new TDM ordinance and program to make it an even more effective program. I hope you've read that document and will ask me questions about it because I don't have unlimited time to respond to all the great things of Philip's second response.
We have about 30 seconds left.
Thank you. It is hard to imagine why anyone would object to the study part of Smart Growth's first requested change. Adding this required study and report is necessary to assure that information is obtained from the commercial tenants, employees of commercial tenants, and apartment residents who will be directly impacted by this new program.
That's your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next registrant is William Okowitsch of District Six, to be followed by Robbie Weber, to be followed by Adam Pagankopf.
Hi, everyone. My name's Will Ovich, and I'm very much in support of TDM. I have started looking into urban planning and urbanism over the past few years, and I think TDM is a great change from the way that we used to integrate transportation and new construction. So before, we had blunt tools like parking minimums, and now the TDM program is a new flexible way to address, address transportation needs throughout the city by recognizing that people need to move around the city, people need to get from home to work, but ignores, doesn't require them to get there by car. I have heard Bill's arguments before, and I, I don't think they're very convincing. You know, my wife and I, we've gone down to one car. Unlike Ian and Kaylee, I had that decision made for me when someone told, "My car." But I can assure you that we have one car, and one parking space is enough for one car. Some of the stronger provisions in TDM, and the highest points are unbundling parking and, I can't remember all the 10-point ones, but unbundling parking is one of the strongest provisions in TDM, and by requiring that for all current and future uses, that could make a huge change in how parking is allocated throughout the city. Additionally, creating a two-tiered system by excluding existing buildings from TDM is going to undercut the purpose of TDM, and creating a sunset provision would effectively kill TDM because in three years' time, the entire program, which has already been under pilot and working well, would be called into question again, and we'd have to go through the whole process. Instead, the city staff are going to be reviewing individual points of TDM, which makes sense. They're going to be reviewing it every six months or every year and reevaluating the number of points in TDM. So rather than sunsetting it, they should be reviewing it, which is already in the provisions. Thank you. I hope you aren't up too much later.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robbie Weber of District Five, to be followed by Adam Pagankopf, to be followed by, I think we, by Sally Jamison. Robbie?
I'm over here.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to turn on my timer here. So I just wanted to give you a little background. I hope that you got a chance to read the letter that I sent earlier about this. I've been working on this issue for over 10 years now. When I chaired the Long Range Transportation Planning Commission, we knew that we needed a TDM program. Eric Sunquist, who was on the Plan Commission and later became my boss and is also my friend, had suggested in 2015 a point system, which I attached to the end of my letter. The reason he did this is that TDM was already being required. It is in our ordinances and our zoning code. It was already being required at Plan Commission, but they were getting a lot of questions. What is TDM? I don't know what to do. Tell me what to do. Just, I don't know what you want, so please give me some guidelines. Well, now we've got guidelines. This is what is going to be very easy to understand for developers. If we do not pass this program, it does not mean TDM goes away. It just means there are no guidelines, and it gets more difficult for people coming to the Plan Commission. I also happened to work on a report that would look very similar, if you saw it, to the city report. Just before I retired at the UW, I worked for SSTI, and I wrote the report and did a lot of the research that went into the report that you see in your packet. This is obviously framed as a transportation issue, but I want to point out, this is also really important for affordability and equity because people who live in apartments and are paying for parking but don't own a car are paying for a parking space they are not using, and in many cases, that could be anywhere from $100 to $200 a month in my neighborhood, which is on the west end of the campus. They could have their rent lowered by that much. We all are worried about affordable housing. This is one way to make housing at least a little bit more affordable. At the same time, employees who don't drive to work, for whatever reason, they don't, can't drive, they don't own a car, they can't afford a car, they choose not to drive, are also paying for parking they are not using.
About 30 seconds.
Why aren't they getting those benefits as well? I urge you to please pass this. Plan Commission wants it. It passed unanimously. Transportation Commission passed unanimously. TPPB passed unanimously. It's time that we do this after all this time. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer questions.
Thank you. Our final registrant is Adam Pagankopf from District Six. Adam?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I just wanted to speak today in support of implementing the transportation demand management program in its current state. Staff has done a great job of developing this program. This is a really critical program for helping create a more equitable city where all residents have viable options for transportation that doesn't involve the use of an expensive-to-maintain and expensive-to-own vehicle. This helps, helps us meet our climate goals by reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and reducing the wear and tear on our roads and reducing traffic in our city. This will create, so these are all great goals, and the way that the program achieves it is really significantly improved over the process that was in place before. This basically is creating a straightforward review process with a clear formula for compliance, and it would remove a set of slow discretionary political steps at the commission and county council level. Should be, you know, kind of better for everyone involved, people in government, people in staff, and for developers as well, as far as the process goes. The staff has developed, and the Transportation Policy and Funding Board have developed a great plan for implementation. This will go, I think about six months for them to roll out the program, and then we'll have two reviews spaced six months apart, and then after that, we'll have reviews every, about every year going forward. So there will be changes, opportunities to change, tweak the program as needed. So yeah, overall, you know, this does a great job of kind of balancing the goals of the transportation event management with concerns that, you know, we might essentially cause capital flight, you know, push developers to other markets through regulation. But I feel that, you know, this is a great state of program as it's written. It's going to be better for developers, it's going to be better for the city, and we're going to accomplish the goals of TDM in an efficient manner.
Thank you. That is our last registrant on Item 82. Are there questions for any of the registrants on Item 82? Alder Paulson.
I have a couple of questions for Bill.
Bill? Go ahead, Alder.
I had a question, I've got a couple of questions. So I want to start back in Item 1 of your recommendations on a study. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about what that study might look like and if that's something Smart Growth could help with.
Well, that's a good question, Alder. I'm sure Smart Growth would be happy to help with trying to gather the information. But one of the things I wanted to point out with that study recommendation in one is that my concern is that the reviews that are being talked about, the six-month and annual reviews, are mostly going to be looking at what TDMs have been, plans have been submitted and getting feedback just from the Smart Growth people. And what I really want is for a much broader outreach to the people who will be directly impacted, which is not the Smart Growth people, not the developers. It's the, it's the residents and the employees and the businesses that are in the new buildings. And so that's, well, will help, will certainly help facilitate, but I want to make that distinction that the, I don't think that reviews that we're talking about is going to take that extra step and try to reach the people who are actually directly being impacted.
Okay. Thanks. I'm going to follow up with staff on that one as well, too. And then just one more question on, on number two here, on the, on the TDM program for, we moved the exemption from, from existing buildings, and then staff said, "Well, it would make a two-tier." And then your, the response back, I didn't quite follow, it didn't feel like you were kind of tackling back. Does that not, in Smart Growth's mind, create two-tier? Doesn't that make it life more difficult for property owners and developers?
Another good question, Alder Paulson. So the provision about bringing changed uses and changed subuses in, in our view, is not going to happen that frequently. It is going to happen sometimes, certainly, but it's not going to be like, that's going to bring all the, suddenly sweep all kinds of buildings into the program in the next 10 years. Because a lot of times, you know, if it's an office use that goes, that, that becomes vacant, another office use will come in. If it's a residential use, if it's an apartment that becomes vacant, another, another apartment dweller will come in. So that, I mean, it's, it'll be very, very hard for any existing apartment building to ever be brought into this program by that provision or pretty much any other provision. Vast majority, vast, vast, vast majority of existing apartment buildings will never come in. Most office space will never come in. Most hotels will never come in. Some will, small, very small numbers, but not a great many. And so the point I was making is that including that provision in the ordinance will not do much to increase the, the reach of the program, to increase the benefit of the program, but each time it lands on some tenant space, it has the potential to have a real harm. So you're not getting much benefit, but you're causing substantial potential harm in those few instances when it actually does hit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I suspect you should stay here, Bill. Alder Fair?
Bill, I guess I just have a follow-up. You maybe sort of answered the question I was thinking, but you have said that the developers aren't really going to be affected as much as the tenants and residents, and you talked about harm. So I guess, can you be more concrete? Like, what kind of harm are we thinking about? Like, what's going to happen? What do you envision happening to tenants, office tenants or residents?
All right. Good, good, good question, Alder Fair. So by and large, especially, we're talking about new buildings, that's all going to be that the tenants and the, and the residents and the, and the employees are going to have to pay for all that. When you get to the occasional situation where a building, existing building is going to have to change use because they, they can't get a tenant in fast enough that has the same use, that's the one situation where actually you would potentially harm the property owner. And the harm is, is that the property owner needs to bring another tenant in. They're trying, they would dearly love to get the same kind of subuse in there so they don't have to mess with this. But they also don't want to leave their space empty for a long period of time. And so they're, now they're kind of stuck in this really, really hard place where they, either one, they're in a bad situation. Now, the, the, the hope is, is that that ability to request a five-point reduction from staff is something that can happen fairly expeditiously, and so then maybe it isn't so bad to bring the new tenant in with the different subuse because maybe you can kind of put together a plan. But the, but the concern there with that appeal process is that as the program becomes mature and staff become very busy, it'll be difficult to get an answer fast enough. And so imagine, if you will, you're, you're an owner of a commercial building, you've got a space coming open, and you're hunting for a new tenant. The only new tenant you've found so far is a different subuse, and you have to say to that tenant, "I need you to just stay with me here. I don't know how long this is going to take, but I need you to just stay with me while I go to the city and try to get a reduction because I can't, I can't make a TDM plan work if I have to do all the points. So will you just stay with me?" The, the answer from a lot of commercial tenants who are looking for space, because they're usually looking at multiple buildings simultaneously, is like, "Why am I going to bother with that? I'll just go over to this building where I don't have to mess with that." So that's our concern.
That building over there would have to mess with that.
Not necessarily. If that, if that, number one, that building could be in Middleton, so no. The other two, the other thing is, is that, let's say it's a restaurant, and the space that it was looking at was a, was a shop space. That's a change in subuse. But in this other building, there's an empty restaurant space. They don't have, they don't have the same issue going over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I have questions for our former alder.
Thank you, Bill. Robbie?
Hi.
Hi.
I know you mentioned that you have seen this project for like a decade or how, yeah. I was wondering if you could maybe just, I think historical context would help. Could you like walk us through the iterations?
Sure.
To where we are now?
I believe that something was included in the zoning code in 2010 that said that transportation demand management was required, but there was no definition. There were no guidelines. Like, a lot of people didn't even know what that meant. In 2011, I have another memo that I didn't send you, again, from Eric Sunquist, who was both on the Plan Commission and on Long Range Transportation, which was a pre-existing committee before TC and TPPB were. We redid all the transportation commissions, but they did long-range transportation planning. And I chaired that for a while after I left the council. And in 2011, Eric Sunquist, who was on Plan Commission, sent a memo that said, "Hey, I think this is something we have to define, TDM. We have to have some guidelines because people are coming to Plan Commission, and they don't know what to do." And then in 2015, the one that I did send to you, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I don't think the one in 2015 had the exact example. 2011, it was a development that is now the digestive health for the UW, but there's also other uses. It's out on, just past Whitney Way on University Avenue. And that had come to Plan Commission. Plan Commission had said, "We want you to do some TDM," and they said, like, "What do you want us to do?" Because again, there's no guidelines. There's no list. So first, Eric said, "Can you..." list. So first, Eric said, can you just hand this out, this list of possible mitigation measures? Can you just hand this out to applicants? And the city staff agreed to just hand out the list. But that apparently still was very confusing to people. So, you know, back when, in 2018, when I wrote the report, or started the report and started researching it for SSTI, we were also working with the City of Madison. We didn't have a transportation director at that point. We were redoing all the transportation committees. We had a different mayor. All sorts of things had changed. But we did talk to the City of Madison about what they thought also was needed. We worked with several cities. But we also researched many cities across the country. Some of that research you actually will see in the city report. We finally have a program that we think will work for the City of Madison. And city staff has done a fabulous job. Sorry, I didn't say that in the first part of my comments, because I really mean it. I think they've done an excellent job. They've made a lot of changes based on feedback from the development community, from the public, from other city staff, other cities. They've done a lot of research on what would work, and I think we've come up with a really great program. We can tweak it in the future if we absolutely have to. I have some ideas on things that probably should have been included. In Arlington, Virginia, it is required that every new development that is under the TDM program has to have a TDM coordinator that the city and the employees or tenants, they have to know who that person is. So they know who to go to and say, okay, I don't want to drive. What else can I do? Help me find some other solution. We don't have that in our program. I think we should. I think every building should have a TDM coordinator so that people know who to go to, just like they know who to go to if there's a problem in the apartment, or there's water leaking in the bathroom, or whatever it may be. I think there are other measures that could be added. But, you know, I'm pretty happy with the program we have now. And if we need to make changes, we can make changes once we get it underway. But I am very happy with the program as it is now, and I think it's a really good one, which will work for the city. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions. But let me just note that we are on the edge of quorum. So for Alders on Zoom, if you're there and able to keep your camera on to not make me nervous, that's awesome. And for Alders in the room, please count noses before you get up and step out. Alder Vitiver, did you have questions?
Ask for a five-minute recess.
Alder Vitiver would like a five-minute recess. Is there a second? Is there any objection to taking a five-minute recess? Seeing no objection. Oh, Alder Wihilehi, you have your hand up? Okay, that's a second.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. All right. So we will recess until 9:27. Okay, we're one minute out. One minute out. If folks could take their seats and come back on the Zooms. All right. If I could have Alders back in the room, in their seats, please. And Alders that are on Zoom, if you could either turn your cameras on. There we go. Two, three. Okay. The hour of 9:27 having come and gone, I'm going to call the council back to order and ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Paulson? Alder Paulson is here. Alder Fair? Alder Fair is here. Alder Tischler? Alder Tischler is here. Alder Vervier? Alder Vervier is here. Alder Vitiver? Alder Vitiver is here. Alder Raheli?
Here.
Alder Raheli is here. Alder Benford?
Present.
Alder Benford is here. Alder Bennett? I'll come back to her. Alder Carter is excused. Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin is here. Alder Curry? Alder Curry is here. Alder Evers? Alder Evers is here. Alder Figaro Cole? Alder Figaro Cole is here. Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Foster is here. Alder Furman? Alder Furman is here. Alder Harrington McKenney is excused. Alder Heck? Alder Heck is here. Alder Madison? Alder Madison is here. Alder Miyadze?
Present.
Alder Miyadze is here. Madam Mayor, we do have quorum. Thank you. All right. So we finished with public comment, and we're on to items excluded from the consent agenda, starting with item 41, which is Legis 74750, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinance, is to change Alder terms and elections. President Furman?
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 41.
Mayor, point of order. Just want to remind people that this is a 14-vote item.
Thank you. That is correct. It is a 14-vote item. Are there questions for staff on item 41? Alder Wihilehi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to know the implication in term of budget, but also how this will be done for outreach in term of the coming spring referendum.
All right. So I think that's two questions, Alder. Perhaps our finance director could give an overview of the fiscal note?
Certainly. This ordinance amendment, as you know, would change the terms of council members from being elected on the odd years to half the council being elected every year, in effect. And there is an election held every April at each year. So in terms of staffing elections, it would probably not change those costs. There are costs, though, that are assigned to the city by the county clerk at each election. And that's based on if there are local officials, city officials, on the ballot. And so this has the potential of increasing those ballot and programming costs as much as $40,000 compared to the current sort of term for council members.
Thank you. And on the second question, I'm not sure if that's a question for the council office. It's probably primarily a question for the clerk's office. I'm not sure if anyone but Maggie is here.
And I don't remember what the second question was.
So the second question was outreach about the change.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that would probably, I mean, it might increase our costs on how much outreach we would do regarding the elections. So that would be the biggest thing. So we would have to have increased costs in some of the stuff that we give out to people in terms of bookmarks and things like that, and making sure that we have staff at libraries and other locations, making sure that folks are aware that local elections are happening.
Alder Wihilehi, does that answer your questions?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions for staff. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on item 41? Going once, going twice. Alder Carter is here.
I'm just going to ask for a roll call.
You will have one, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have no Alders in the queue wishing to discuss, so it has been moved and seconded. And a roll call has been requested. So all those in favor of item 41, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I'll remind us that it is a 14-vote item. 14 votes are required for passage. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Paulson? Alder Paulson, I will come back. Alder Fair? Alder Fair, no. Alder Tischler? Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Vervier? Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Vitiver? Alder Vitiver, aye. Alder Raheli?
No.
Alder Raheli, no. Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Benford, no. Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry? Alder Curry, aye. Alder Evers? Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figaro Cole? Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman? Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKenney is excused. Alder Heck? Alder Heck, aye. Alder Madison? Alder Madison, aye. Alder Miyadze?
No.
Alder Miyadze, no. Alder Paulson? Alder Paulson, aye. That is 14 ayes, five nos. Nope, 13, sorry. Alder, you may change your vote. Alder Fair votes aye.
Alder Fair votes aye. Then that's 14 ayes and four nos.
With 14 ayes and, I counted five nos.
One, two, three, four.
Four nos.
Yeah.
Okay. With 14 ayes and four nos, the item passes. And that will take us to item 58. President Furman?
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 58, which is Legis 74456, awarding funds from the city's Affordable Housing Fund for various worthy projects. Are there questions for staff on item 58? Seeing none. Is there discussion on item 58? Seeing none. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 58? Seeing none. Item 58 is approved unanimously. And perhaps Lynette can go home now. And that takes us to item 70, which is Legis 74702. And that takes us to item 70, which is Legisstar 74702, authorizing the allocation of funds to community-based organizations under the Youth, Young Adult and Adult Employment Services, RFP. And item 70, oh, I'm sorry. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for missing this earlier under disclosures and recusals, but I would like to disclose that I am an employee of YWCA Madison who is a awardee of this recommended slate, but I do not have oversight or access to the funds.
Thank you, Alder. So on item 70, President Furman?
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt. I would suggest that perhaps a brief orientation to the item from CDD staff would be useful. Ms. Shelton Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Yolanda Shelton Morris. I'm the Community Resources Manager in the Community Development Division, and I oversee the funding process for the employment RFP. So I'd just like to highlight a few things as it pertains to the funding allocations per priority area, while also sharing some examples of programs staff have recommended for funding and how they connect to the funding criteria clearly outlined in the RFP. It is important to note that our current employment portfolio for 2022 is split into two priority areas, youth and adult. As previously shared and noted in the RFP, young adult is a new priority of priority area of focus, as we recognize that young adults ages 18 to 26 are often disconnected, missing key educational and employment opportunities, and are at an increased risk for a host of negative outcomes. Given that this is a new priority, there is no current 2022 allocation specific to this age group, although the current adult priority area does encompass programming that supports all adults ages 18 and up. However, CDD sought additional funding in the amount of $500,000 to support employment programming in the 2023 operating budget, and the mayor and common council responded by adding $250,000 to CDD's budget to help support funding for programming for young adults. Those additional monies are factored into staff recommendations and are included in the $1.75 million we have available to allocate. In staff funding recommendations, one program previously funded under adult employment and one program previously funded under youth employment moved under this new priority area, Omega School and Operation Fresh Start's Legacy Program, both of which are being recommended for funding, as well as an additional Operation Fresh Start program focused on parks conservation. The remaining five programs being recommended are all new programs, some of which, in addition to Omega School, provides GED, HSED support, but also links that support to employment training. All of the recommended programs are in a direct alignment with the city and the mayor's priority to support agencies serving the young adult population and also align with the funding criteria. For example, Bayview is a program addressing the continuum of services for Southeast Asian young adults, and Jewish Social Services is a program that focuses on immigrant young adults from around the world. Both are examples of how programs align to criteria, particularly around their specific focus on serving those populations, and they also have a history of working with those populations. A final example in this area is the Rape Crisis Center, which proposed a program that builds upon leadership skills that apply to multiple types of jobs. Community Services Committee members recall or heard from a former program member from the Rape Crisis Center who spoke about the communication skills they gained through the program, which highlights the important fact that broad-based communication and organizational skills apply to many industries. This is an example of a program that aligns with the criteria centered around employment and training focus and CDD's efforts to fund programs that provide opportunities across a continuum of service and industries. In the youth employment priority area, the 2023 allocations are approximately $31,773 less than the current allocations for 2022, due to one applicant being moved to the young adult priority area, which is Operation Fresh Start, and one agency in the current 2022 portfolio who did not apply for 2023 funding. As shared at the November 9th Community Services Committee meeting, there are many industries, not just one or a few, in which youth, young adults, and adults are interested in, and it is our recommendation to invest in more programming that supports that, which requires us to be inclusive of different types of programs that both respond to the post-pandemic economy and meet the changing workforce needs of residents. For example, staff recommendations include MAIDAM, a program that is a local leader in the STEM tech internship field specifically focused on serving Black female youth. This is another program that aligns with criteria, particularly around their focus on serving Black youth, and have a history of working with that population. Additionally, the program is focusing on one of the top industries highlighted in the Industry and Local Economic Need data that was shared with Community Service Committee members from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that was highlighted at this year's Madison Region Economic Development and Diversity Summit hosted by the Madison Urban League and Madison Region Economic Partnership. Again, that data tells us that some of the top industries include STEM-related fields, healthcare, and agriculture, to name a few. Another example is Sustained Dane, an employment training program for youth focusing on growing green energy and is specifically targeting to serve youth on the north side of Madison. This is an example of a program that not only aligns with the data that I just mentioned, but it also serves a specific geographic location that has historically been underserved when it comes to programs for youth. Lastly, the recommendations include funding four new programs in this area, which includes MAIDAM and Sustained Dane, as well as Rape Crisis Center and Rooted Wisconsin. Last but not least is the Adult Employment Priority Area. While it is an area that presents a significant decrease from the current 2022 allocation to the proposed 2023 allocations, it is important to note that three programs in the Adult Employment Program area in 2022 did not apply for funding in 2023, totaling $143,000. And two programs being recommended for funding moved to the new priority area of young adults, which again is Operation Fresh Start's Parks Conservation Crew and Legacy Program, which, as I previously mentioned, are both being recommended for funding. Operation Fresh Start will also continue to receive $163 to continue work with the City Engineering Department to support invasive species management. The contract for that work is managed by CDD staff, and funding for that work was not included in the RFP, bringing their total number of proposed contracts for the city, with the city, for 2023 to three versus their four current contracts for 2022. Again, I want to be clear that staff recommendations are not completely dismissive of construction or trade work in the adult or young adult employment area. Staff are recommending in the adult employment area funding for the Wisconsin Regional Training Partnership Program, which specifically serves women and other underrepresented populations in construction and trades, while also addressing the participants' educational needs, such as preparing participants for apprenticeship exams and pre-apprenticeship employment opportunities. This aligns with funding criteria centered around an agency's theory of change and ability to ensure outcomes are appropriate to the employment and training services continuum. Another example is the Madison Area Urban Ministry, who serves a very high-need population facing extreme barriers, especially individuals returning home after incarceration. This is also another example of a program that strongly aligns with funding criteria as it relates to target population, employment and training focus, and location of service area, just to name a few. Staff funding recommendations were not easily decided and required staff to make a lot of difficult decisions, which unfortunately did not allow staff to recommend funding all applicants, nor did it allow staff to recommend funding all agencies at their requested funding levels. However, the recommendations before you wholeheartedly are centered around, one, being inclusive of all industries, not just one or some. And that inclusivity means we recommend funding that serves to support a portfolio of programs, both ones that we currently fund, as well as new programs that we do not. Two, staff recommendations are based on more than just a proposal score, but rather an array of criteria that was clearly outlined in the RFP process, just as it was in 2017, that applies across all applications, because we know that just focusing on score alone would be highly inequitable. And lastly, staff recommendations are proposing to support 21 of the 31 agencies that applied for funding, of which 13 of those are led by people of color. These recommendations as a whole are an effort to continue centering equity in this work. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on item 70? Alder Rahelier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question in term of the voting for this particular item 70. Are we voting on the substitute or the original item, Agenda Item 70, number one?
What was moved is the original item.
Okay.
At this point, there's nothing else before us.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Alder Carter, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. And what I would like for, I think it was Yolanda, I can't, I didn't write it down, to do is just give me the agencies that were actually, that you're recommending funding.
Alder, that's a substantial list, but all right.
Is it all the agencies listed on the agenda?
It is all the agencies that are listed in the resolution, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions for staff. Alder Evers?
Like to move is second alternate?
There is second.
Second.
All right. Alder Evers?
Would there be questions for staff on the second, appropriate at this time?
I think it would be appropriate for someone, perhaps you, to just give a brief overview so the world knows what we're talking about.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I sent out an email to all of you, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it. Maybe nod your head if you did. If you didn't, I'd rather not read it verbatim, but just brief background. I attended the November 21st meeting of the Community Services Committee, alerted to the possibility that there, that the committee-
Alder, if I could just interrupt you. Perhaps just a brief description of what the second alternate is?
Oh, well, thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't really want to go into all the detail right now, and I appreciate that guidance. The second alternate offers, approves the $1.75 million based on staff recommendations to the community-based organizations and amends the 2023 adopted operating budget by making available $159,600 additional money to be applied specifically to the young adult employment and adult employment training programs.
Thank you. And just before we go any farther, I'll ask the city attorney for clarification. Because this amends the budget, that makes it a 15-vote item?
Correct.
Right. So just so everybody knows, whereas the original would have been an 11-vote item, the second alternate is a 15-vote item. All right? So then, Alder, you had questions for staff on the second alternate? Alder Evers?
Yeah, just, perhaps this question, I'm not sure if it should go to Jim or Yolanda, but from your reading of the language of this amendment, there have been, some have suggested that this is an earmark, that it's targeted to a specific organization. Is it your understanding that instead this calls upon staff in consultation with the committee to make a decision what to do with this additional funds without any earmark, without any specific direction as to where the money should go? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Staff would convene and draft recommendations to present to the Community Services Committee for their review and further discussion.
And perhaps this should go to Jim. There's been some criticism raised that these awards are multi-year contracts, yet the money that's made available and salary savings would be a one-year bump, and that that somehow would result in a disappointing reality for those organizations who would perhaps not find reappropriation. Could you-
Alder, can you just make sure you're talking to your microphone for the people-
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. Could you explain the appropriation process just briefly for us, the annual budget process, and how the awardees are reminded that this is something that needs to be voted on on an annual basis?
So Alder, we do make, we can only make annual commitments of funds. We, I think you know, we do these request-for-proposal processes among the different program areas on a cycle that usually cycles through about every five years. So the implication is, when we complete an RFP process that we're making, that we're intending to continue funding for that five-year period, but we make it clear to funded agencies that those commitments are dependent upon future councils appropriating sufficient funding. This alternate provides both what I would consider to be base budget funding, so the $91,000 moving over that had been intended to be used for a council wage increases, that would be money that presumably would continue in the base budget unless the council acted to remove it. The balance of the funding generated by the delays in start dates of new hires, that is one-time funding. And so this resolution would introduce some uncertainty with respect to it, because presumably, without further council action to appropriate that same funding for 2024 and beyond, it would not be available for these contracts.
That's right. So that 57% of this funding is base funding, and 43% would need to be reappropriated if it were to not be cut. Is that correct? Something like that?
I didn't do the math.
Maybe this question is for Yolanda. Could you envision then making an award to, say, one of these young adult or adult programs and letting them know, let's say it was $30,000, that 57% of that would be based and that they could count on that presumably for the next year, but the 43% would be something that would be subject to either reappropriation or it would be cut in the following year? Is that something that you believe could be adequately explained to someone who's receiving this award?
Yes, I believe it could be adequately explained, and it's similar to funding that we provided with ARPA funding. It was one-time funding to allow programs to expand their employment programming this past summer.
So agencies would not be confused by this?
They should not know.
Okay, great. Thank you. A question then for Arielle Smith, please. Arielle, in your matrix of tools in the public health space with wish to deal with violence prevention, how do you view employment opportunity pathways? Do you consider that a vital part of violence prevention?
Yes, that is considered-
Yes, that is considered a vital part of violence prevention, is having opportunity for employment growth and just general opportunity.
So it's actually a public health strategy, is that correct? It's not inconsistent with your, the work that you do, and so it's not like in a separate bucket of money? In fact, it's consistent with what you do at Public-
Alder, the mic.
It's consistent with what you do at Public Health?
That would be correct. It is listed as a strategy and an activity within the Violence Prevention Roadmap to Reducing Violence.
No further questions.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions, so we'll move to discussion. What's before us is the second alternate, which, just as a reminder, accepts the staff recommendation and adds additional funding for the young adult and adult services areas. Is there discussion? Alder Fair.
Thank you. So I guess I want to start out by saying this item literally is making my stomach turn. Not, it's just not a comfortable discussion for me because I kind of regret that we are put in this position as council. So I do want to, at least in my comments, stay true to what I think I've tried to say over the years, that these type of decisions are best made at the committee level. So I know some of you, but probably not the majority of you, have sat through, you know, a situation, a process similar to this, whether it be on community services, with service contracts like this, in whatever realm, or homeless services, and when we talk about CDBG, or affordable housing, or the Emerging Opportunities Program. But a lot of work gets done. So I don't know about you, but when we're listening to discussion about this program or that program, or how things were scored or whatever, it's really hard unless we have looked through all those materials, read all those applications, know what the RFP said. And I'm, no criticism whatsoever ever to anybody, because I'm right there with you, but I haven't done all that reading. I'm guessing most of you haven't either. If you have, congratulations, you've done a lot of work. But the members of the committee have, right? And obviously, staff has done the most work. And that doesn't mean that committees don't have a role to play in oversight of staff and, or of our city, and can make changes and make, you know, not necessarily go along with staff reports. That's certainly a committee's role. So I think, you know, by and large, as a general rule, when we get to, we shouldn't get to a situation like this, and usually we don't. So I kind of regret that we're here. But we are here. And so the way I've been thinking about this is we essentially have a policy decision to make, and that's whether we want to use this $159,000 in addition, I guess, to support adults, young adult employment. And as much as it goes against sort of how I usually think we should do these things, I'm going to support that. I feel honestly a little bad for staff, who I think, as far as I can tell, and looking at, watching the November 21st meeting of CSC, did a really fine job and explained themselves very well. I also would like to just say that the way I'm assuming my vote, what my vote means, and if this passes, is that we are, like I said, making a policy decision. Staff, as has just been said, goes back, makes the recommendations to the committee. The committee, I would hope, does their best to work with staff, and, I mean, again, do whatever, committee can do whatever they want, but there's a consensus between the staff and the committee, and they can take care of it, and then we can have it, it comes back to us and we just vote on it, basically rubber stamp, to you, you know, for lack of a better term. And I would also hope that if the recommendations of staff don't please the various organizations, that they recognize that 15 to 30 people's lives are going to be affected positively with this extra dollars, and it might not go through the organization, but it's 15 to 30 people in our community who are going to have a chance at employment and getting their lives back on track. And yes, this is a violence prevention strategy, one of the strongest, actually. So I understand people who, I very much understand people who are going to vote against this of process reasons and that kind of thing, and I'm basically right there with you, but I'm going to support this, and we'll see how it goes. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Alder Fair. Appreciate your thoughts and comments. You know, as I said before, this is not an earmark. Someone said to me, this feels like the river food pantry, and we voted that down because it violated our process, and we don't do earmarks. This is not an earmark. This actually was the committee voting unanimously to approve the recommendations, staff recommendations regarding the $1.75 million, and then voting unanimously asking for more money. And I raised my hand, and I said I would try. And I came up with $159,600, which is 9% of $1.75 million. It's not a non-trivial amount of money. Now, folks have said also that the process is broken, but yet we also heard from Greg Markle that the process is actually improving. I would say that no process is perfect. Democracy is messy, and when you involve community organizations and with a limited pot of money, it could get very messy. And when you have situations where a committee perhaps disagrees with the implications of what went into the RFP and how staff interpreted it, or at least some committee members, it can be unpleasant. But that's what it means to live in a democracy. It would be a lot more efficient if, I assume, if staff could just make these decisions, and they wouldn't be questioned. But that's not where we're at. But that does not mean that the process is broken. The process is improving, and recognition with the mayor's help, that the young adult cohort of roughly 4,000 disconnected younger individuals in our community, half of whom do not have high school diplomas, and struggle to find gainful employment, and find themselves kind of in the swirling eddy of perilously falling into the criminal justice system or into violence, that this $159,000, 9% of the overall budget, could make a difference in people's lives, significant difference in people's lives. So we have to ask ourselves, with this ability to change people's lives, what's the highest end-use for the $91,000? Is the highest end-use to hire another person for common council office to help us respond to emails and phone calls and keep that money in the common council? Or is it to, for programs that are already teed up and ready to go, to interrupt violence, to interrupt poverty, and make a longstanding, trajectory-changing outcome in people's lives? I contend that the highest end-use for this, the $91,000. And by the way, the remainder of that money up into the $159,600, I checked with every department head whose department would be impacted by those delays. Not one objected. In fact, several said, we are team players, we want to be on board, and we see that this is a good thing. They recognize the need in our community. So I realize that this doesn't have the votes, but at least it appears that way. I nonetheless feel it was very important for all of us to sit and listen to the testimony. If you weren't at the CSC meeting, you didn't hear it. It's moving testimony. People's lives are changed. And I'll close by just something that I put at the end of this email. I'm a follow the efforts of Homeboy Industries, which is the world's largest, most successful gang intervention program in East LA, situated in East LA, founded over 30 years ago by a Jesuit priest named Father Greg Boyle, who started out his work trying to arrange truces between warring gangs, only to find those truces did not last. What dawned up on him would work would be jobs. They started businesses. They have roughly eight businesses now, and any one time, hundreds and hundreds of former gang members, people coming out of prison, find gainful employment, and find the compassion and the tenderness to be able to deal with their trauma and to get their lives back together. Lives are changed. And hence, the primary, the key motto at Homeboy Industries is nothing stops a bullet like a job. We have issues in our city with shots fired. We have issues with young people getting hold of guns and shooting at each other. Jobs are the key. We have a chance to ply 159,000, 15 people, 25 people, 30 young men and women having their lives changed. It's not a nothing. I ask you to consider that as you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have Alder Miyadze next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to be long with this, but I want to definitely commend some city staff on all the work that they have done. It's not easy to, you know, do all that they did with all 21 and all, you know, all 31, actually. And so I just want to commend city staff for all the work they do, and they did. And I want to commend Evers with his passionate statement. And also, too, like you said, this is a violence prevention for youth, you know, like Errol just said. So I definitely want to, I'm definitely going to support this, and I hope that rest of our colleagues do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson.
Yeah, so we direct our comments to the mayor, and the mayor, remember, on budget night, when we ran out of, when we didn't quite get the votes to do this, and I almost made a motion to reconsider that funding for the council office so we could potentially use it on budget night, and I got a death glare, like I've never gotten a death glare before. So I did not make that motion. But I think, you know, we are sort of at a, you know, what are we going to do with this $91,000? It's kind of burning a hole in our pocket. And, you know, earlier, Alder Abbas talked about one of the, you know, one of the key people in his life being, that made him being able to be an Alder was his wife, Holly. And I think a lot of us lean on our spouses, if nothing else, to kind of vent. And I vented to my husband about the crazy way we do budget amendments and up against this, the levy limit, and, you know, it sort of becomes the order at which we take up the amendment, and people are strategically voting against things that they would like to do because they have a higher priority. And usually, he patiently listens, or maybe he rolls his eyes and said, you know, I don't really care. Let's figure out what we're going to have for dinner. But this time, he actually agreed, yeah, that's a really weird way to do it. And I, you know, I have nothing against this particular program. I think all the, I think extending, putting more money into this program sounds like a great idea, but I'm looking at some of the things that are being introduced on the floor that are a meeting or two behind, right? It's sort of like The Amazing Race, where if you get on the plane first, you get, you know, get kind of a four-hour head start to the next city. If you aren't quite there, you got to wait for the next plane. And this one feels like, you know, my colleague was able to find a body, a plane that was moving tonight, that he could potentially put this $91,000 on, and, you know, these other options, the Equal Opportunities Investigator, which felt like a really great program. I would have liked to have supported it back at the budget. The Violence Prevention Work that we're doing in public health, which is also, you know, introduced on the floor here, is another potential use, also a great idea. And so I would really, I'm going to vote against this tonight, not because I don't think it's good, but I would like us to, well, I will see where it comes down, but I am inclined to vote against this tonight because I would like us to be a little bit more systematic about how we spend that extra budget authority that we've got that isn't currently out, isn't likely to go anywhere, and think about that. And I'm hoping that maybe CCEC will have an opportunity to talk about maybe the better way to sort of tackle this, that we can explore here in the next couple of weeks. And if we can't, we can take it back up in January. You know, we can continue in allocating these funds a little bit later. And so, so, yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to think a little bit harder about how to spend this money, rather than what's the first thing that we can get a vote to do, because I don't think this is particularly a great process. So let's spend a little bit of time, let's see if there's anything else that we might want to use. I actually think another potential good use of this money is to sit on it and pass this along to the council that takes office in April. Let's give them some opportunity to tackle some stuff. We'll probably spend it on ourselves because, let's just do that, but it's something we could put on the table. So I'm going to vote no on the substitute, but I am inclined, I'm certainly open to voting for it at some point in the potential near future, but when we've had a little bit more thought over, you know, what do we really want to tackle? So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
I just wanted to say, I think it's really tough because this process is very cruel, and I agree with my colleague over here that, you know, it's tough making these decisions. But I really just want to say that I hope this vote doesn't come off as like you're anti-youth employment, or you don't think that these services should be funded, because I think anyone that is voting no on this, I think everyone here believes that we should be giving monies to these services, and at the end of the day, it's like, like my other colleague noted, we have so many items that we're jumping at. It seems like the entire council is trying to make a pass with this money and what, how we think it should be best distributed, and I think almost every agency in this city deserves this funding. But, I don't know. And I also wanted to say, I think it's sad that we're here because some colleagues didn't believe that we deserve a livable wage, which is kind of ironic, given the vote in front of us about helping youth people receive a livable wage. But I really hope that this does not come off as we're anti-youth employment, and I really hope that we can continue supporting such funding sources, and this is not the end-all, be-all for that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bitiver.
So a couple of days ago, I got an email from one of my constituents who had been at the Cole Center when the shots were fired on State Street, and they were there with their 12-year-old son, and they were very concerned about what is happening to this city in terms of crime. I'm willing to bet that most of my colleagues, and probably a good portion of the mayor's inbox, has similar messages. I would like everyone on this body to think about what this proposal does in terms of crime reduction. It gets our young people working, which means that there will be less crime. So this is in direct response to what our constituents want, so I urge my colleagues to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford?
Thanks, Mayor. I got a lot of thoughts running through my head. I think I want to start off by saying, you know, I'm a member of the Community Service Commission, and in full disclosures, while legally I'm not mandated to do it, ethically I thought it was important to share that I worked for both the Urban League and Operation Fresh Start on a couple occasions at both places. So I certainly, I can tell you my observations. I witnessed the tremendous work that they've done. And I'm a little confused, Mayor. Here we have this resolution, and while I heard it wasn't implied or it wasn't an earmark, just from the testimony, it appeared that maybe the Latino Workforce Academy, OFS, and the Urban League maybe didn't get that memo, that it's not earmarked for them. But, you know, Mayor, here it is, you know- know, Mayor, here it is, you know, any opportunity to put more money. And you, you know a little bit about my past work career, and I would certainly never argue against this. And but there, there's a couple of things that concern me that I'm just going to be really, at least from my point of view, Mayor, transparent. So serving on Community Service Commission, when there's over 4.4 million in requests, 1.75, and we all say it over and over and over and over, there's just not enough money, there's not enough money, there's not enough money. And we understand that you put more money into where we came up to 1.75. So it got really messy. As I believe in my heart that staff does an amazing job. They did their due diligence. And some of the rationale that we all heard tonight, and we heard at the meeting about the process. So I guess I found it somewhat disingenuous to attack the process when only a couple of agencies were making that complaint. So once again, I, you know, we need more money, we need more money. But it was messy because it pitted organizations against each other. It really poured salt and wounds of that visceral reality that there's just not enough money. So here we send it back if we approve this. And, you know, I hope that down the road, we can continue to put money into these efforts. But I, I, I guess I'm questioning, would staff have to go through the same RFP and face the same political pitfalls, if you will, where you can bet that there would be strong lobbying for that $159,000? So maybe if there was a little bit more time, and I love what my colleague Alder Fair said, in the sense that, you know, I'm biased, I serve on community services. I would like to have that opportunity to more intentionally look at what we would do with this money to avoid the negativity and, quite frankly, some of the disturbing actions. And I get it, everybody's fighting for this limited pie of money. So I don't begrudge any leader of an organization. And it was valuable to hear everybody's testimony tonight, especially the young folks that came out and talked about impacts of certain agencies on their life. So I think what I heard earlier from Alder Paulson, that, you know, it feels like there is this competing interest over this money. And when I start hearing things about an internship program, maybe more, we could beef that up in the council office, that certainly is a pathway to employment, you know, potentially. And so I'm going to vote no tonight, because I think that throughout this, and and before I finish, Mayor, I really commend Alder Evers. It feels like, you know, at that meeting, he heard, he heard it, and he's committed. And I think he's doing his job fighting for additional funding. And hopefully, you know, in the future, collectively, we heard the testimonies tonight, and that collectively, we can put more of an emphasis on these types of efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I just want to say, Mayor, my, I, my first service learning opportunity was at OFS. My first desk after quitting my good job was at Urban League. And somehow, some way, I've always been involved in most organizations across the community. And I think potentially, I may be the only person sitting here who has a closest experience as a nonprofit leader who might, you know, not be getting the funding that they had hoped to receive. And so one thing I just want to comment is that I am nervous to say yes to this, simply because, to take it back to that committee, where I actually, I attended the last meeting, and the nerd in me just went back and watched maybe six more meetings previous to the one in November. And I happened to also read most, if not, I don't think I got all of them, but I read most of the RFPs submitted for this. So I can find, was there actually any issues with the, how staff made their recommendations? And so I'm thankful for folks like Yolanda, who took my calls and my emails to help me make sure I was looking at the correct thing to make sure I'm making good, smart decisions. And so one thing I want to just reiterate is that the process is absolutely not healthy. It is not healthy for nonprofit leaders. It is not healthy for their staff. And it is absolutely not healthy for their participants, because we're setting, unfortunately, I think with the unintended consequences that we're, like, folks are saying we're pitting folks against each other. But we're sort of setting up this belief that the city sits down and sort of like absolutely decides to take from one to give to the other. And you have staff believing that, you have participants believing that. And it just sets up unnecessary hurt when we don't need to create that. So I'm very much committed to how can I use myself in order to help improve the process overall, so we can restore people, we can restore participants, we can restore nonprofit staff and restore nonprofit leaders. So however I end up with my vote today, does not because I am anti-anything. It is more so because I want to ensure that we create or improve a process that looks a bit more healthy and less toxic. Because I was disheartened, I think, being new in this role, but being very involved in the community, and getting some of the calls or texts or emails that I receive, was disappointing and heartbreaking. So I would like to just, we commit to improving the process so we can stop taking folks through this. Because I've been through it, and it is not, it's, it's unhealthy, just overall, it's very unhealthy. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak on this item, Alder Evers, for the second time?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, if the process is unhealthy, it's a function of scarcity, it seems. I mean, the analogy I had in my head, or just the image of when a United Nations truck shows up with a flatbed with food, or water, or, or goods to be distributed to refugees, and folks crowd around, and some push others out of the way, it's an unpleasant, maybe even feels like an unhealthy process. But that's a function of scarcity. And our processes are what they are. This was about responding to a committee that said, while the members of that committee disagreed among themselves about what to do, some were in favor of the staff recommendations, others wanted to change them, all agreed that they wished they had more money. And they asked this council to come up with more money. I went to work and came up with $159,600. It's not going to solve everything. It's still the, it's not enough. Scarcity still exists. So it's still messy. It's still an unhealthy process. But it is what we have, and it will change people's lives. So rather than looking for fixing a process that probably is beyond our grasp anytime soon, again, I think the right thing to do is to put money towards those organizations that are teed up, who have already responded to an RFP with programs that can be funded immediately, yielding results and change lives for the better. It's the highest in use for the resources that we have. I have no regrets in trying to do this. And I, again, one last time, ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of folks have already shared some of my thoughts around the challenges with this item that's in front of us. I will not be supporting the alternate here. I do, I did just want to chime in and add one more piece to this, which is, you know, we talk about process as if it were, it's this other thing. It's also how, it's the actions within that process. And I think one of the pieces of that process is where we're at right now. Having this, having the ultimate decision come down to the common council is part of our process. And it's a part that I can't imagine us actually changing. I think this is the place where the buck stops. This is where the, you know, the final decision needs to happen. There are only 21 people in the city of Madison that can sponsor legislation. There are only 21 people in the city of Madison that can make a motion tonight, that can put forward an amendment like this. And when that happens, I think we, we've seen how the community is going to respond to that. We see how service providers are going to respond to that. We see the lobbying that's going to happen. We see the clients that are brought here to testify. And what I'm going to ask my colleagues here is to just think about what our role is in this process. And I appreciate a number of folks that have, that have called out the difficult position that we've all been put in here tonight. To me, it's really heartbreaking. I think it actually just creates more trauma. And I would ask that, that all of us that are in that rare position to decide what we're going to bring forward, really take that responsibility thoughtfully and carefully, and be careful about what we decide to put forward, and the wheels that that puts into motion, and the amount of time and energy that that requires from staff, from agencies, from clients of agencies, from all of us, and the issues that it brings up, and the hard feelings that it creates. So I will not be supporting this. And I just want all of us to think about our, our part in this process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter.
I'm calling for the question.
The question is called because there are no other Alders in the queue. And I anticipate your request for a roll call, Alder.
Yes.
So what is before us is the Evers Second Alternate, which funds the staff request and adds $159,000 additional dollars for young adult and adult employment programming. This is a 15-vote item. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Paulson. Alder Paulson, no. Alder Fair. Alder Fair, aye. Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler, no. Alder Vervier. Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Vitterver. Alder Vitterver, aye. Alder Rahalier.
No.
Alder Rahalier, no. Alder Benford.
No.
Alder Benford, no. Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett, no. Alder Carter.
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Conklin. Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry. Alder Curry, no. Alder Evers. Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figueroa Cole. Alder Figueroa Cole, no. Alder Foster.
No.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman. Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKinney is excused. Alder Heck. Alder Heck, no. Alder Madison. Alder Madison, no. Alder Miazze.
Yes.
Alder Miazze, aye. Six ayes. That would mean, nope, 12 nos. With 12 nos, that alternate fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to adopt the original. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the original motion on item 70. And that will take us to item 74. Which is Legisstar 74696, submitting the appointment of Ayodije Arroyo for confirmation of a five-year term as the Transit Chief Operating Officer. President Furman.
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt. I fear the late hour means that our traditional confirmation hearings are not what they should be. But is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. Take us to item 75, which is Legisstar 74753, approving, the, adopting and approving the Director of Human Resources contract for confirmation of a five-year term for Aaron Hilsen. Aaron was here for a good portion of our meeting, but not at the moment. Motion, please.
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt. I would just like to say that I'm delighted to have Aaron moving into this position. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic vote in favor? Seeing none, that vote will be recorded. And I hope you will all take the opportunity to congratulate both these folks next time you see them. That will bring us to item 80, which is Legisstar 74410, direction to implement the metro network redesign in summer of 2023. On item 80, Alder Furman, a motion, please.
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 80. Here again, I think a short context from staff would be useful. Right, well, I think we're hearing from Mr. Ginsbacher on Zoom. Phillip? Are you there?
I'm, I'm, I'm here. Is this for item 80?
This is for item 80.
That, I don't believe that that's me. It might be Mike.
I think we have Justin here that wanted to speak to that one.
Okay.
If Justin's not here, I can speak to it.
Justin is here.
Should I do the presentation from back here or up at the front?
You have the slides. You can do it wherever you want.
Okay. I'll just stay here. But this is a brief presentation. It's, I respect for your time. I won't go through everything and all the details. You know, we've, you've seen this information or variants of this information many times before. So I'll step through this relatively quickly, but obviously, I answer any questions you've got. Let me go to the next slide. So just to, you know, the background of why we're doing this, we've had some longstanding issues with the existing network, including primarily causing people of color to have to transfer at nearly three times the rate of white people, in addition to a host of other challenges operationally that we've got with the existing system. And so that, in conjunction with the fact that we're trying to build back from COVID-reduced service levels, as well as building BRT and complementing that, led us to pursue this network redesign. You can go to the next. As you all know, we went through a long process to, to adopt a plan. Ultimately, in June, after much discussion, the council adopted a plan, but did direct us to come back to you with implementation details, including the equity analysis or Title VI analysis for final adoption, before we moved forward with that implementation. And so that's what we're doing here today. Let me go to the next one. This is the adopted plan. We, it was original draft plan plus a handful of amendments that you all voted on and approved. Next. And so what is before you today is some of the implementation details, including some of the, we've made some adjustments to route names. For example, we heard from some in the community that the letters M and N are hard to decipher. So we changed some of the number, the lettering systems, and a handful of other things. We put together a draft system map of this. We made some minor changes to just the ends of routes as they turn around, just in showing those on the map. We have included some very early schedules, including when the buses would start and stop, the bus stop locations, of which there are a lot of changes there. And then the Title VI results, which is our federally required equity analysis. And I'll go through that in a bit more detail here. Next. And so this is just an updated map of, essentially, it's the same content as the previous version of the map, but just a slightly different color coding system, and kind of done more in the, in our metro way. Next. So on the Title VI results, that's obviously the biggest bulk of, of this package here. Title VI is a requirement of transit agencies that are federally funded. So we've been doing these sorts of equity analyses for decades. And it is a core tenet of, of planning staff. We cannot do these wrong, otherwise we risk tens of millions of dollars in federal funding. And so this is a core of transit planning 101, what everyone needs to learn how to do. And, and so we've conducted this analysis on the network redesign in comparison to our existing system. Go next. And so this is, next slides are a couple of the results of this. And so I think what the slides show is a substantial, is both a substantial benefit overall for, for all the different groups, but also confirming that the, those benefits do not disproportionately fall. but also confirming that the those benefits do not disproportionately fall to white or higher income groups. And so this the slide is showing you in the orange the number of jobs that can be accessed within 45 minutes for the average resident within each of these groups in the existing system. And then the blue is how many jobs could be accessed by the average resident in each of those groups in the new system. So again, showing you a big increase percentage-wise in all the groups, but that the black, Hispanic, and Asian demographic groups benefit to a higher degree than than white people. Next. And this is a very similar chart showing for those who are low income versus non-low income. Again, a major benefit in both categories, but the low-income population actually benefits slightly more than the non-low income. And then next, and this is looking slightly differently at the data showing not not what the average resident experiences, but the looking at all the people in each of those groups and how many benefit versus how many are negatively impacted. And so you'll show you see in green there the number of people or the percentage of people in each of those groups that have significant benefits by the new system. In gray are the percentage of people really are about the same, and the red showing those with negative impacts. As we've said throughout this process, there are people who are negatively impacted by any change, and this is no different. But what we are showing here is that the the number of people, percentage of people that are positively impacted far, far greater than those who are negatively impacted. And then this is again a map showing the, you know, how things look across the city in terms of how the benefits or negative impacts are distributed. And I think, as we talked about in the last phase over the summer, most of the negative impacts are surrounding the transfer points. And those transfer points, because they have so many buses coming in and out of them all at once and leaving all at once, they show big benefits in the current system. And so getting rid of those transfer points shows a net negative benefit or negative impact. But by the for the most part, the rest of the city sees dramatic benefits. And then so you go to the next one. And then just we did hold a public hearing on this December 9th at the Transportation Commission, or November 9th, I'm sorry. Some of the questions we heard was skepticism about those Title VI results because they were done by the same firm who conducted the the actual redesign planning itself. I will say that is very common practice. Again, this is a core tenet of what we do. No consultant and and us as an agency are going to risk any of that federal funding by putting our finger on the scale, so to speak. And these these are all very objective numbers, and they are not it's all numerical. We're not using any objectivity or subjectivity here. There were some questions around excluding some of the student areas and looking at the rest of the city separately. We did not do that because we cannot through Title VI, we cannot exclude students as a demographic group. However, the the benefits in this the campus area are more or less the same as the average across the city. And so if we were to exclude those, it would not really make a meaningful difference in the final results either way. And then, as you heard at length in the summer, the process in June, there are some concerns about longer walks. And particularly on the South Side, we did, the council did adopt an amendment on the South Side, but was requested by those residents. However, they still did come to voice concern at the public hearing. And then again, we heard some from some folks with disabilities who would be would have to use our paratransit system going forward rather than our normal fixed route system. And yes, that that is true. We will have some people who will now have to use the paratransit system that might previously not had to. But also, there may be people that currently have to use the paratransit system and now would no longer would be able to use the fixed route because of the redesign. So it's again, getting back to that that graph showing that there are some negative impacts, but they are smaller than those who benefit. And then next steps going forward to implementation. We do need to to develop our detailed schedules. That will allow people to actually plan their trips and know when the bus is going to come in the new system. Facilities development, we've got a lot of bus stop changes to to execute, and so that's why we're bringing this to you now, because we need to move all that forward. We are hiring outreach positions to provide real on-the-ground training for our writers on how to use the new system. And so we will be out in the community continuously talking to people, training them how to use the new system, you know, how they make their trip today versus how they'll make it in the future. And that that would be both. We have kind of outreach staff that will be going to different community groups as well as on-the-ground personnel talking to people on the buses at transfer points and things. Next. And then so just in conclusion, the Title VI analysis confirmed everything that we talked about in the June planning process. And and so therefore, we are recommending to move forward with this implementation plan. And again, there's a plethora of information to that I could go through. But just out of the interest of time, I'm not, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on item 80? Alder Rahalier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Justin. Just want to appreciate the staff on working on this. And particularly, you know, with with my district, you know, they were able to make some adjustment for the routes, so I really appreciate. And, you know, some of my questions is with slide eight, nine, and 10, it's very commendable to have such a very strong data that support the redesign. What I'm asking is what is the disconnect and which low-income communities have been surveyed in terms of the responses? That's my first question. And then the second question is in slide 12. It talks about some of the concerns about the community in terms of moving forward with this. So what are the some of the strategies to mitigate those concerns in slide 12? For example, the disability communities and so forth. So those are my two questions.
Am I still active there? Okay. So on the first question, the this analysis is based on census data, so it is not based on surveys. However, the it does take into account the entirety of the city, including all low-income neighborhoods and non-low-income neighborhoods across the city. I hope that answers your question on that.
Yes, and can you can you pinpoint exactly with which communities of low income? I know it's census data, but, you know, since we are talking about all Madison area, I'm just curious at which particular districts or area or communities have been given to this data.
So it's based on the census block group throughout the city. And so basically, that that census block group data includes income. And so it takes it considers any census block group that's below a certain threshold as being low income. And so those I don't have the map of those in particular, but I think it's about 20% of the census block groups throughout the city. And and those are kind of everywhere across the city.
And does that include students, parties, or communities?
It does, yes, because there are.
Thank you. And the other the other question, I don't know if you
Yeah.
able to respond is in slide 12, some of the concerns that you have heard from the communities, what are some of the strategies to mitigate those concerns?
Yeah, so many of the concerns, you know, in particular, the we address the skepticism of the results as well as the filtering out students. You know, those are just things that we cannot do or that we at least something in low income or on the students piece. As far as the the longer walks, so that was really done in the amendment process. You know, those those concerns were voiced and amendments were adopted to address those concerns. Clearly, they didn't fully address all of their concerns. But, you know, ultimately, the the only tool we've got at this point going forward would be to continue that outreach, make sure that they understand how to use the new system. And then, you know, this static or the system isn't static forever, right? So we will continue annually, go back and revisit and make tweaks to the system and can use that outreach process each year to make tweaks that will hopefully resolve some of their concerns over the long term as we iterate the system to make it better.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions. Alder Miyazee?
Yeah, Justin, I just want to thank you too for all the work that you've done. There's far, you know, all the amendments, changes that you made as far as going to Mendota Mental Health School Road, making sure the buses don't go there, as far as food service, going to Pick and Save Woodman's, all the changes that you guys made, the city staff. But I guess my question is that there's still a few things that I want to definitely see if I could change. So if this is voted in tonight, what are the possibility of still reaching out to you within the next couple of months, seeing if we still make some changes on routes that I heard, like Route 21 being moved from half an hour to an hour service? If if there's changes I wanted to make, what is the possibility of doing that still?
So certainly, at this phase, we would not be able to make changes other than, you know, adjusting schedules. You know, instead of the bus getting there at 6:15, get it there at 6:30, those sorts of changes. Any other changes in terms of increasing frequency or actually changing the routes, we would need to revisit in our kind of annual iteration process, which typically has been done in the spring of each year. But so the next opportunity would be the spring of 2024 to make those adjustments. And that's typically gone through Transportation Commission. But just with the level of work that we have between now and June, there I honestly, I don't see opportunity to make additional changes between now and between now and then.
And Alder, to increase service would require a budget amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Thank you. And Justin, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. Basically, from, and I'm just going to use January to June, for implementing the new redesign. And then after that, are you saying on an annual basis there will be tweaking or prior to that? And from and and second part of my question is from during that period of implementation, when is the outreach workers going to be available?
So so yes, the so the the network redesign would actually go into place in June of next year. We'd be laying a lot of the groundwork between now and then, but the the actual change is literally overnight. There's just no other way to make that change without it happening all at once. And so we'll be doing lots of work on bus stops and outreach and travel training and all of that between now and June. But then in June, that switch would flip. And then we would immediately begin the 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 process of identifying where things are slightly off-kilter. So you know, with a new all new schedules, we're going to have instances of schedules being off. We need to add a few minutes to this route and add take a few minutes away from that route just to make the schedules work. We're going to have feedback from the public that says, you know, we need to get this bus to here at this time and to make a transfer, things like that. And so we'll have all kinds of schedule adjustments that we'll need to make. And we'll start working on the package of those improvements. And we'll make some right out of the gate that we can that are just scheduling changes, and then the rest would kind of packaged together for the spring of 2024 to implement in the summer of 2024. The outreach will be kind of continuous. We've we've been able to hire people, staff, actually, just in the last couple of weeks, we had a staff member start who's dedicated to being an outreach specialist, going out of the community, talking to folks, hearing what is going on, the challenges they're having, and bringing those issues back to us so that we can continue to build a list of things that we need to tweak. Certainly, future changes beyond 2023 will be on a much smaller scale than what we're talking about here. I'm using the word tweak over and over because it it won't be wholesale redesigning of routes. You know, it may be just adjustments, a turn here, a turn there, a schedule change, things like that. So but I expect that process to go on an annual basis, starting in 2024 and kind of each year thereafter.
And then at what point will the transfer points be eliminated?
They would they would be eliminated in June of 2023. And the exception, the South Transfer Point, we would still use in a very small capacity for a short period of time, just because two routes end there and we need a restroom facility for our drivers. But we would reimagine the use of that facility as part of the north-south BRT construction when that project comes online, you know, several years down the road.
And when you when you stated that the community would comments, is that some of that could be with the outreach worker, but is that also something that they can call customer service and make comments to?
Yep, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Justin, can you please refresh my memory about the the tool, the app that we were going to use to collect information? Is that applicable?
For the fare collection or the?
No, I thought we were going to put have an app to kind of connect with users and get feedback.
So we're still working on so we're working on what our next steps will be on some sort of user-facing app. Right now, our strategy is to integrate with a lot of third-party apps like Google Maps, and there's an app called the Transit App. And so that's currently our strategy. I think as part of our fare collection changes that will come up in the next year or two, we we hope to, you know, take another look at that to to integrate mobile fare payment into our system and hopefully integrate that with the the trip planning app as well. So.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, I have no other Alders in the queue for questions. So we'll move to discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 80. And we will go on to item 82, which is Legisstar 74423, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to establish a transportation.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Miyazee?
I I did have my hand raised during discussion, so I don't know if you saw that.
No, Alder, I'm sorry.
So can I?
Wait, you didn't object to the unanimous vote, Alder, so with the item is not before us anymore.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. So on item 82, a motion, please.
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt. I think again, and may I emphasize to staff, short presentation on this item would be in order. And I'm not sure who the right staff is.
That's me this time, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and I will I will try to keep it as brief as I can. Just one moment.
In the meantime, Mr. Lynch, did you want to weigh in? You don't don't press the button again once I turn it on, folks.
I know, I just was giving the floor to throw up who's managed this project.
Thank you. Phillip, go ahead.
Okay, I will try to make this as quickly as quick as I can. So first, I think it's it's
Uh, so first, I think it's it's important to start with what is the Transportation Demand Management Program? And it's really a package of policies and strategies designed to increase the transportation system efficiency by getting people out of their cars and driving alone and into other modes of transportation. That doesn't mean that we want to eliminate that as an option, but it means that we want to we want to get people out of their cars when they when they when they can and level the playing field across all modes. And it's important because people are driving more now than ever ever. Uh, in fact, the number of miles that people are driving is outpacing population growth nationally and locally. And what that means for us is that on some of our most important transportation corridors, we are completely uh, at capacity during the peak periods, and we have little opportunity for expansion. And even if we could, we might not want to because it would make it difficult to be a pedestrian, cyclist, transit user, and it would create significant barriers in our community. Uh, there's also a climate component to this. We know that if we keep doing what we're doing, we have some of the worst climate outcomes, and locally, what that means is rain. We've actually had more than four inches annually in additional precipitation over the last 30 years when compared to the 20th century. And that doesn't come evenly all the time. In some cases, we get it all at once. So a way to 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 assist with this is to reduce our CO2 emissions, and transportation is the largest contributing sector to that. So the way that we would do this is by changing the way that we facilitate growth. Instead of expanding our transportation network, when we have new developments, we would reduce the number of trips that new development creates so that it fits within our existing transportation network. And again, that is by walking, biking, and transit. Here's a fun graphic. Uh, basically, if we have 200 people and 177 cars, and you get them out of their cars and onto a bus, they fit within one lane on one block. So it just shows you how much more space efficient we can be if we get people out of their cars, and how many more people you can fit on the roadway if if some of them are not in their cars. Now, we know that not everyone is going to take a bus or bike or walk. What we're talking about here is getting a percentage of people to 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 shift from uh, driving to another mode of transportation. On the left is our current mode share, so right now, two-thirds of people drive alone to get to work. Uh, and that's really good nationally, but we think we could do even better. And uh, it's kind of illustrative uh, on the right-hand side of what it could look like. So we've received questions about whether or not TDM is effective, and there's national research that shows that it is, uh, and that different things that are all incorporated in our program would reduce VMT. And we wouldn't be the first community to do this either. There are communities all across the country, including in La Crosse, uh, here in Wisconsin, that have implemented TDM programs. Uh, and our own UW-Madison has had a TDM program for a number of decades. So this is within our plans, our comprehensive plan and our transportation plan. It's within the mayor's sustainability vision, and as was mentioned earlier, it's already in our ordinances, and it's actually been in our ordinances for over 20 years. Problem is, the application's been uneven, the requirements have not been well-defined in our ordinance, and it can lead to Plan, Commission, and Council struggling to determine exactly how much TDM mitigation is enough, and that creates an environment of uncertainty that this plan would seek to resolve. And many of you may have been involved in the Madison Yards Project, and this actually took seven meetings to get through uh, the TDM uh, plan for that project, and a lot of that was because it wasn't well-defined. One of the council meetings actually took an hour to discuss the TDM uh, for that particular project in and of itself. So that's exactly what we would try to avoid with this, and I'll talk about the spreadsheet briefly. Um, but needless to say, we've looked at programs across the country and tried to to pull the best elements of each of those programs, from the oldest programs to some of the newest ones, and we've got a pro- a process that we think is pretty simple. First of all, you determine the applicability of the of the program to your particular project. It's not going to apply to every single project in the city, uh, but it will apply to many of the larger projects. If it is applicable for a specific project, you determine the requirement and then create a plan with the mitigation measures, and then implement that plan and report out to the city. So much of this would happen within a spreadsheet that we put together that would make it easy to figure out what the requirement is based on the property characteristics, and it would provide a menu of options that the developer could select from to mitigate the VMT that that property would develop. And there are many factors that go into it. Obviously, the land use, different land uses generate different amounts of tra- of of uh, traffic. The development size, the larger the development, the more mitigation that would be required. Uh, the higher the parking ratio, the the more the higher the requirement would be, and then the location, uh, so that we have a modifier system that I'll talk about briefly in just a moment as well. So we also developed 42 individual measures, uh, with point values ranging from one to 10. The higher the point value, the more effective the measure is, or the more expensive and more challenging it is to implement. Um, so some of these measures have modifiers so that we're not encouraging implementation of 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 certain measures that wouldn't make a ton of sense in a particular location, such as providing bus passes outside of the transit service area. And then in court, in uh, it after speaking with the development community, we also came up with this tiered system of uh, basically uh, providing point requirements. Uh, and the reason for this is that we heard from the development community that it was difficult to meet the TDM requirements the further you got from the downtown area. In the downtown and campus area, it's easier to meet requirements because there are multiple transportation options there. In many cases, uh, parking is already unbundled, and if you're on campus, they already have a TDM program. Uh, so uh, the further you get out, the the more difficult it is to meet the requirements, which is why this map explains that on the periphery, you'd have to meet 65% of the requirement, and then that requirement terrace is in, the closer to get to to downtown. We've also included base points for transit, and and this map is going to be replaced uh, now that the redesign is, you know, uh, been been approved. So basically, with the way that this will work is if uh, properties within the BRT service area, they would receive five points upfront. Within the all-day transit service area, they'd receive three points, and then within the peak-only service area, they would receive one point. So then we've also put together this tool that would help developers go through the process. So it's a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet. They would enter the characteristics of their property, so that's the the land use type, where it's located, the size, and the amount of parking, and it would let them know whether or not there's a TDM requirement or not. If they have one, uh, it'll show it on that main page in the in the second tab of the spreadsheet. All of the measures that were listed are in here, and they could just select from the measures, and it will tell them when when their plan is compliant. Uh, if they have a plan they're satisfied with, they could save it and submit this to the city. We are aiming to have this through a cella, uh, which is similar to what is used for the rest of the development review process, so sort of uh, occur concurrently with the rest of the development review process to ensure that it's happening seamlessly. Few other considerations, the program would go into effect six months after it's approved at council, um, and it wouldn't impact existing properties unless the there's an expansion of parking, an expansion of the use, a change of use, or redevelopment of the site. And I just wanted to end by by pointing out that we've made many modifications to this program in in consultation with the development community. We've made approximately 40 of them, and we think that it's made the the program better, more implementable, more feasible, and we think that it's going to reduce the administrative burden for all parties. So we we appreciate the um, the the collaboration with them. I know it's not exactly what they want in in all cases, but we do think that what what we've presented and created is going to be effective at meeting the requirements and the goals of the program. With that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on item 82? Alder Carter.
Phillip, is there room to tweak this in the future? What I'm thinking is, is that as we implement this, we might find that some things are working and some things are not working. I'm really concerned with existing buildings where they can't really expand, but yet they are under whatever guideline it is. Can you address that?
Absolutely. That's an excellent question. So the way that the program is is created in the ordinance would allow the Transportation Commission to be able to modify the program as they see fit. Uh, we also intend to, six months after the program has been implemented, to go back to Transportation Commission after uh, getting advice from the the folks that have actually participated in the program and making modifications as necessary. We also have included in for existing buildings, a a process to reduce the point requirements. At the staff level, the point requirement could be reduced by up to five points, uh, if there are hardships such as uh, the financial infeasibility of being able to to actually implement uh, the program or space constraints. We know that many existing buildings will just not be able to implement some measures because they have the site that they have, the building that they have, uh, or they'd have to rip up their parking ladder, things of that nature. So we tried to build that in. If, for whatever reason, that five points wasn't enough, and at many smaller sites it would be, um, the the opportunity is there to go to the Transportation Commission and request additional relief.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions for staff. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 82. And uh, we will, those are the last of our uh, agenda items. We have one introduction from the floor that was separated from the consent agenda. That's Legislative File 75055, which would amend the 2023 operating budget to reallocate money within the common council operating budget. Um, and so let's start with a motion to introduce, uh, Alder Furman.
Move introduction.
Moved and seconded to introduce, um, Alder Foster.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to move to add a an additional referral and a lead referral to CCEC on January 11.
Right, so the amendment is to um, make, let me just make sure I understand this, Alder Foster, to make CCEC the lead?
Correct. With a referral on January 11.
With a meeting on January 11. Um, that's moved by Alder Foster. Is there a second? All right, moved and seconded to make CCEC the lead with the referral to the uh, January 11th meeting. Is there discussion? Is there objection? Alder Paulson.
I was just going to ask if it would then make sense to bump it back to a later Finance Committee date.
Um, no, Alder, generally, the um, lead committee goes last.
Okay.
Alder Wihilehe?
Yes, I would like to object to have CCEC as a lead. Uh, if I don't, I would like to know the reason for making the referral as the lead for Alder Foster.
All right.
If he can answer that.
Alder, you're you're welcome to ask. Alder Foster can answer if he wishes, but we'll note your objection. Um, Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I think it's pretty standard practice to, um, this is the the council budget's really um, primary purview of CCEC. And I think just like another item that's being introduced tonight related to violence prevention, lead is public health. Um, so I I think it's it's actually just the typical way to do it, and it it makes sense to me, so that's why I propose it that way.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, all right, so there's objection to unanimous vote. Um, let me see if we can do this. Is there any objection to recording Alder Wihilehe as a no? And the balance?
I'm a no.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Uh, all, we'll let the clerk get her papers in order. Um, it's been moved and seconded to add CCEC as the lead referral with a meeting on January 11th. Uh, all those in favor of the referral? Aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Paulson?
Aye.
Alder Paulson, aye. Alder Fair?
Aye.
Alder Fair, aye. Alder Tischler? Okay, Alder Tischler abstains. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vitterver?
Aye.
Alder Vitterver, aye. Alder Wihilehe?
No.
Alder Wihilehe, no. Alder Benford?
Aye.
Alder Benford, aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry? Alder Curry, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney is excused. Alder Heck? Alder Heck, aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Miazze is no longer present. One, two, three, four. 14 ayes, two noes, and one abstention.
14 ayes, the referral is added, and then on the introduction, is there further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of introduction as amended? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Alder Paulson, it's your turn.
Okay, well, there were also announcements, but I'll just combine it. Uh, I just wanted to note the passing of uh, Andrew Cohen, who was a member of this body, uh, elected in uh, 1972, and then again in 1973, uh, from the 14th um, district. Um, and he would have turned 75 at the end of the year, so he was, uh, we started out uh, the meeting talking about uh, civility and public discourse, and and former Alder Cohen was known in his time uh, on the council as being uh, someone who brought folks together and and worked on uh, uh, conciliation, uh, and so I thought it was appropriate to also end uh, on a note of reconciliation. So I would like to make a motion uh, to adjourn in memory of Andrew Cohen.
Thank you, Alder. Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote, and we are adjourned.